Tonight's agenda.
I move to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
I'll second that.
Hearing a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Trustee Bain, would you like to read the mission statement for the district?
Certainly. Lakeville Joint School District's daily mission is to maximize student learning and ensure every student is growing academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally every day in all environments.
Thank you very much. For an announcement, the Board of Trustees have created a mission statement. Trustee Grissom, would you like to read our mission statement?
Sure. The LJSD Board of Trustees is an elected body of community members committed to serving with honesty and integrity, nurturing a relationship of trust. We hear the voice of our constituents and represent their views of our district. We provide oversight of taxpayer funds through fiscal accountability. We govern through developing, upholding, and advancing policy for the purpose of forging an academic consensus. We create and empower well-rounded citizens while respecting parental authority. We promote individualism, nurture talents, encourage passions, and provide opportunities within the LJSD community.
Thank you. All right, Chrissy, do we have any patron input?
We don't.
Okay. Move on to the action items. First is the consent agenda. We can either approve all the items at once or break them apart. I personally like to approve them individually. So, does anyone have any questions? Or are we okay with going individually with each item?
I don't find it that I'm okay with that.
Okay. First is approval of the meeting, the minutes of the previous meeting for executive session on 4/20/21 and the regular meeting of 4/20/21. Are there any comments or? Okay. Sorry, the attachment Chrissy states that it's 4/8/2021, but I believe the regular school board meeting minutes are for 4/20/21.
That's correct.
Okay. Any comments or concerns on either of these minutes?
I do not have any.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Then can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting's executive session of 4/20/21 and regular meeting of 4/20/21?
I'll make a motion to approve the executive session and the regular school board meeting for 4/20/21.
I'll second that.
Right, hearing a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item are the HR items we have and we have presented. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the items presented?
I had, I was just curious about the coloring.
Yeah, so I was trying to separate that out a little bit better for you guys.
Okay.
You guys need that. People in the blue there are for this upcoming next school year. And I have, and they are also women who are all certified, when in yellow is a classified and rest that are white area of the guest teachers. And the people above the purple line are current hires for this year.
Okay, gotcha.
It's just trying to make it a movie here.
There was one other. Oh, um. Can you explain to me that the Timberlake Middle School, the current principal assistant is moving to assistant principal? What is the difference or what does that mean?
We're having, we're moving all sixth grade there. So, once we are in alignment, the average, the number that we require to have go from a PA into an assistant principal. And he only had one person apply in building and that was current principal assistant. It's a, I mean, the program was designed to grow your own and he's been a principal assistant for three years. And so he was the only candidate. So, he's now that their numbers are going up to 500, with all the sixth grade, they were, they were, I think they're by 20, 30, like 5.7 or somewhere around 5.5 or current and without growth. They are big enough to have an assistant principal and.
Okay. So, I guess that it, so it's basically the same job duties, just a title change? Is there salary change? I mean, and to me, it sounds like the same position, just it is.
It's, so the principal assistant program, they, there's a win-win benefit. If you don't have enough students yet, or if somebody is in training, they get to try out, the benefits of the program, they get to try out being an admin. They like it, are they well-suited? We get to try them out. Are they a good fit? Do they have what it takes to be an administrator? The win-win for us is they're paid at their, whatever their teaching salary plus a $2,000 leadership expectation. So, it's very, not very much money for the amount of hours they put in. It says that you either must be starting or started or have your own degree. So, it's somebody that's willing to commit the hours and schooling for it. They help with all, you know, night activities, elementary parent nights and all the levels, night activities, weekend things, supervision evaluation, and they start to learn to even classify evaluations and walkthroughs and they help with that kind of stuff. So, they're starting to delve into every part of the job. Then they do a book study with either myself or this year Dr. Passon's been doing it on leadership and then teach some different things. So, you get to see, and then they also get to maintain their property rights. So, even though we're paying them less than they would get as an admin, when you are an admin under property rights. So, they get to maintain their teaching property rights because you're a teacher plus a small stipend. So, it's a win-win and that's the situation. And then it's, they just basically get to work their way up if it's a good fit and it works at that. And then they go through the hiring process if there's more typically, there's not more than one candidate because everyone knows that that's kind of the program that people are growing into the next step.
Okay, gotcha.
So.
So essentially you're looking to admin. Different.
Yeah, so the, the only change in the responsibilities is his job description. We have, and Brooke can send those to you. We have a PA principal's assistant job description and we have an assistant principal job description. So, you have to have the endorsement to be as an administrator to go into IC to do that. There's certain things you can do, like you can, then you can evaluate certified personnel. You can, you know, there's a lot of stuff you might do legally when you're in this position that you are still just learning or only you can help out. You can't be the main person in this decision. So, there are two separate job descriptions.
Okay. Yeah, that would be good to see that. And then what about salary change? When salary does change for the admin?
Yeah, and so, and we have that on our website, the admin matrix. You can see what the middle level assistant principal would make versus what a teaching salary plus $2,000 a day. It is, it is a salary change.
Yeah, okay. I just wasn't sure on the lingo and like, was we sort of reading that already? But no, I understand. Yeah, yes and no. Yeah.
And there are some principal assistants that do it, but they don't really want to go. We have some that do not want to go, that I've talked to, that do not want to go into the actual administration. You know, like helping out, but they don't want to go to that next step, even if they have their degree or are, have chosen not to go to that next step.
And it looks like a lot of the others are just handful of them are still, they're in district doing something and they're just moving into some other type of position or a more permanent position. Teachers and.
I want Brooke to put that in there for you because sometimes it looks like we're hiring all these people. And then we, you guys maybe don't know they're already in a position or just transferred or moving or like this. So, I like the way she did this to make it easier for you guys to see kind of what's going on.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, like. Great organization.
Okay, is there any? Oh, go ahead, Ramona.
Yeah, sorry, I have one more question. I think I've asked this in the past. Do, I assume this is some kind of Excel spreadsheet that you track all this in. Do we have a count, a year in count of resignations and retirements along with? Well, you know, like compiled or is it just all of its month by month? Like the way you present it to the board?
So, we talked about doing a annual report, you guys. I can most certainly collect that.
Okay. I would appreciate, it would be nice to sort of see it all in one. That would be great.
I think that was scheduled, we actually canceled the 21, but we can do it. I think Board Chair Thompson and I were going to talk a little bit about, it was going to be in July or off the beginning of August. There's a lot going on in HR world.
Right.
To make it easy.
Right, right, right.
And then she, I did share a couple of board updates ago, the summer agent can do once per quarter for the exit surveys. Does that work for everyone?
Yes. Yep, yep. I prefer the Excel spreadsheet instead of the PDF because, you know, if, sometimes in the Excel spreadsheet, you know, they might fill up the cell and then you can't read it all. You have to be able to.
So, it's Google Sheets, but you'll have Google Sheets. Yeah. So, that, but she, yeah, she can certainly share that with you.
Yep, that would be great. I think that was all that I had, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anyone else have questions or comments? Okay. Then can I get a motion to approve the HR items as presented?
I'd like to approve the HR items as presented.
I'll second that.
Having a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item is the regular and special bills. Does anyone have any comments, questions, or concerns regarding the special bill, the special bills? Can't speak.
I do know it.
Okay. And surprisingly, I did not either. So, can I get a motion to approve the regular and special bills as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular and special bills as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Hearing a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to staff reports, we have our first presentation from the Apple Elementary Principal Kathy Thomas.
Okay. I'd like to introduce Kathy Thomas, Principal of Apple Elementary.
Yeah, it's, the reason it's right back is a little bit of video.
Well, hello. Kathy Thomas, this is my, I stopped counting, 15th year at Apple Elementary. And I am always excited to share the great things happening in our school. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here and share a few, just a little bit of what's going on. These first few pictures, we, this week drew with chalk on our sidewalks, so four kids got there. All the teachers went out and drew sidewalk chalk to welcome the kids in. So, that's a picture of that and our rock at the welcome of our school. This is a picture of our new playground that our PT grades went for last year. It was installed over the summer. So, we have three base structures now for our photos to play on. So, our mission in the district is to maximize student learning and ensure every student is growing academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally every day in all environments. One of the things that we are really tuned into and really trying to stay a focus on are three things that just kind of keep us grounded. And all the work we do centers around these three things. And they're based on John Hattie's research. And it's pretty extensive research telling us what are the, what are the biggest impacts? What are the things that we can do that create the biggest impact in student achievement? And so, with these three things that I listed here, all of our work surrounds that. So, if we're going to do something, we go back to this and say, is this good enough? And so, our research tells us teacher's lessons and student achievement. We know that if our teachers believe that our kids can learn, that they will learn. And that goes for every student that comes through our door. So, we keep that on the forefront of our mind. We know that that's the biggest impact on student achievement. Collective teacher efficacy, that's us working together to do all that hard work for every kid. And self-reported grades, that's our student month conferences. But it's not just an event for us in March. It's really how do we get students to know where they are in their learning? And to be able to tell us that if I walk into a classroom, I want a student to be able to say, this is what I'm learning and this is what I need to do. So, this year, as in every single year, we focus on these three things, safety, climate, and culture and academic achievement. Every year we have a theme also. So, this year, going into the crazy year that it was, our theme was slop and just roll with it because slops just kind of go with the flow very slowly. And so, I encourage our staff this year to just take it one day at a time, one step at a time, and go with the flow and just be happy that our kids are in seats with us because we know we can make the biggest impact with them if they're face to face with us. So, we're excited that we will be, we were able to do that. In the area of safety, Mr. Hogan greeting students as he does every morning. I will say this, a little bit of a candid picture. He really does greet students and talk to parents every day. The great thing about having an armed guard, and I feel really fortunate that we were the first school to be able to do this, is that he really doesn't just walk the perimeter of the grounds and, you know, pace up and down the halls. He is so proactive and reaches out to all of the different schools doing this work. So, not only is he present for us every day and does our safety drills, which is what you would expect, right? He really is this liaison for all safety, everything safety really, from getting us concrete blocks to block an area for our walkers to be able to safely walk along the fence where cars were parked. I mean, he's just always looking at things like that. And then he'll just make connections and get that to happen. So, it's really more than just those safety drills or intruder drills that he's doing. He reaches out to state and local, we have ISP in our buildings, county in our buildings because of the relationship that he builds with them. So, I really rely on him, Michael, who's my PR guy. Because he enjoys doing that work and he's really good at it. And it's good for us because then we get a lot of, a lot more people in our buildings supporting us than going here hopefully. The other thing that's been great is that he, we don't just do routine safety drills, we really do scenario-based safety drills and have the opportunity to really learn from them and talk through them. Instead of just having the some activity, it's really a thoughtful activity. So, we're, we're super glad to have him and really our safety. I just got our state engagement surveys back and safety was the number one thing that our staff said we are out of the park on this. So, it's been great and reaching out to other schools as well. Climate and culture, obviously, if we don't have safety and a really positive atmosphere for kids to learn, they're not going to learn as well. We focused on seven habits for highly effective kids. It's basically our character mantra. And each month we do a habit. Do you click on that? The seven habits, it just shows a visual of kind of what I'm talking about. So, we'll talk about habit one, be proactive, and we'll just kind of go through. It's really just to help kids remember that they can be responsible for themselves, they can do hard things. And then we just focus each month on what does that mean and what can you do to be a better learner? Basically, this is how we frame that, so. And then we just have a monthly focus and, oops, did I just do that? We have a monthly focus to tie into our PBIS, so Positive Behavior Support. Apple's been doing that for at least the last, I'll say 12 years. It's just really part of our culture. And what it is, is it's not expecting kids to know how to behave walking down a hall or being in the lunchroom or using the restroom. But it's assuming that we need to teach that every year. So, we all have the same expectations. So, one class is not letting their class snake down the hall and the other is a straight line. It's just that the kids hear this every year, it's the same thing. So, it builds in a real consistent foundation for kids to know what those expectations are. And that's our Positive Behavior Support System, trust-based relational interventions, TBRI. And adverse childhood experiences are two things that our staff is really familiar with even before Patty did some training with us last year on that. And it's really just serving kids from trauma. And how do we help, because we know their brains are wired a little bit differently, how do we help them learn in our school? It's all post-trauma learning because if their, if their trauma brain is not in the brain, we can't reach them with the content that we're trying to reach them with. So, we do a lot of just work around that, researching around that, book studies. And our teachers are very intimate with that and are not getting kids, letting kids get off the hook because they come from hard places. We just structure it a little bit differently for them so they can learn. Teacher love collaboration is another thing that's just part of our culture. You can see a picture of our teachers here on the snake working together. Something we do a lot is just learning and sharing with each other. Looking at data, you can see this graph here. If the green is above 80, that means systems are in place and are strong systems to support behavior. If it's not, then we need to look at how do we support that better. Academic achievement, focusing on just how we give our kids feedback and let them know where they are in their learning and how do they get there to the, you know, to the benchmark. We're talking a lot, we've learned a lot with COVID and being remote. So, we're talking a lot about like that blend of learning and differentiating instruction using technology. People are doing things that I think they never thought that they would ever be doing or know how to do. And we're, it's, it's really creating some creative teachers. So, that's been exciting. And then we are always looking at data. We're always looking at our students' learning, is it working? Is what we're doing working? And this is just one example of how we look at that. So, we have a lot of dipsticks really to be able to look at that. I gave you a sample that we want to put on a data collection. This is just a sample of, so you get an idea of what we look at. We collect information every quarter about the standards. So, are kids living the standards? And then if they're not, we can say, okay, this group of kids needs some extra help. Let's get them that help. How are we going to do that? And that's when we learn together and plan for that. If kids are good to go, then we say, okay, what's next for them? So, that's just an example of how we look at multiple different ways of looking at data. So, that way, and then kind of our overall using that IC and I already. And then just cool stuff that's happening at Apple. Each grade level has a passion project. Our sixth graders this year planted daffodils bulbs out in by the road. So, there's daffodils blooming in the spring there. We have a garden that our fourth graders take care of. We're really trying to use a lot of science, technology, engineering, and math types of activities. This was actually an activity when the power went out. Some of our sixth graders focused to Ferris wheel. The Idaho Coaching Network is something that we take advantage of. It's a professional development put on by the state. And I was, I was counting in my head last night when I was going through this. I think at least for one year, every one of our teachers has been through this training. And it really just focuses on language and reading instruction, writing instruction, and how to do it better and get students more engaged, some different techniques. And then if you're in the program long enough, so I have a few teachers who have been in the program three, four, and five years, they become really coaches. And so, we have a lot of teacher leading teachers and some, some of these strategies are teaching, reading, and writing. So, that's been a really effective professional development. And then we have community partners that are really strong community partners. We have our parents group, we partner with Apple Baptist and their volunteers, a couple of grays, does a big clothing closet for us so that we can provide clothes and shoes for kiddos. And I think this group is in our, is in our backyard. And so, they've been really supportive to us. That is everything, well, not everything. An update, a highlight to what's happening at Apple. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm good.
All right, thank you. Going on to the next staff report from Lakeland High School, Principal Trent Derrick.
Thank you. You're going to be wanting to work on me. Just forward.
Well, thank you for inviting us to be here to talk a little bit about Lakeland High School. I'm Trent Derrick, the principal of Lakeland High School. This is Karen Quett, her college and career advisor. She's going to be sharing some things as well on this presentation. We know that there's a timeframe here. So, we're going to go through this as quickly as we can. And we're not going to talk about every little bit that's in our slideshow. I just want to say to you that Lakeland High School, super excited about what's going on. We got a lot of soaring going on. And we got community partners that are soaring. We got our faculty and staff are soaring, our students are soaring. And you're going to see that during this presentation. So, the big, the first thing I want to talk about is our community partnership. So, last spring, or last, right at the end of the year, we were looking at our press box, which is kind of the front porch of our school in some ways when we kind of put all games. It was in kind of bad shape, which is something that we weren't able to, to get to with district funds just because of, there's a lot of other things that were priority. So, we, I sent out an email. I said, does anybody want to help out with this? A bunch of people came that night from there. This is everything we did. And that's a very conservative estimate of $50,000. But what did it look like before? As you can see, in bad shape. A little tender bone here right there. There are some poles or ticket booths, you know, siding. And that's just the outside. We did a bunch of stuff inside as well. And this is what it looked like afterwards. You know, we redid the side, we did redo the ticket booths, we did re-siding, new roof, everything like that, painting inside out. And it was all done by these community partners, which were a ton of them. And it was zero cost to taxpayers. And this is just something that said, hey, our community, what a great job. We're so proud. In fact, Lysus, you've been here, heard us, we've been there as well, with providing scat for the community. So, that took place. All it took was an email and we got people coming. That said a lot about our community, we're so proud of our community and what they're doing and how they partner with Lakeland High School. Another thing that happens every five years, I don't know if you know this, but every five years, they have an external D team come to our school and they go through everything. We have to provide them all kinds of documentation, anything that they want. And it's, we have the passes in order to be an accredited school. It's an important review. The report is linked in there. You don't have to click on that, but if you wanted to as a board, you could look at the, at the House Review Report. You know, I just put a quote in there, like Lakeland High School can be congratulated on the work that's been done. Five themes that they noted. Five themes that they noted and they go through and they say, these are what we see is describing the school. I wanna just point out that LHS Index of Education Quality, which is an IQ score that they give in a year, they live in thousands and thousands of schools all over the world. The average CPM, which is the organization that does the accreditation, the average range of their score can be two seventy eight, two eighty three. Our score was three thirty three, way above averages. Talks about how, how much we are impacting. And as opposed to just the average of the schools all around the world. So incredible uh. Uh, thanks to our staff especially. They just do a great job. And when I say staff, it's how they're teaching staff, they're outstanding. They're really, really good, but our support staff as well. So let's take a look at some of these indicators of student performance. So you can see here. Carrie, she's gonna talk about the post-secondary options, so we're gonna do that here in a little bit, but I just wanna talk a little bit about some. Hard data, tangible scores that are going on at Lakeland High School. So the class of twenty twenty one, this is your senior class, they didn't take the SAT last fall because of COVID. So they took it this fall in October. As you can see right there, when they were sophomores, they hit the PSAT. As a sophomore, when we just had them for just a little bit over a year, they're scoring just, just at the state average. Uh, we had scored a nine sixteen, the state was nine four, uh nine fourteen. Uh, when we go to the SAT this fall, the state average is nine seventy seven, we scored ten sixteen. So we were thirty nine points above the state average. So what does that sell us? As sophomores, beginning of their career here at Lakeland High School, we're getting them their score at state average. After three years of being with our staff, the hard work that our students are doing, we're seeing them soar and get up to thirty nine points above the state average. That says something. That's why I wrote a bit about what's going on with that five-year accreditation and you listen, hey, there's some good things going on at Lakeland High School. Same thing with our uh class of twenty twenty two, the SATV score. Uh, I should have put class of twenty two, I'm sorry about that. The fall, they're sophomore year, they were just below the state average. We just got the score back, they're at ten eleven, they're twenty six points above the state average. So again, incredible growth that's going on with our kids and with our staff. AP participation is important. If you just put on that, Dr. Myer, if you would, I just wanna just point on that. This is the program we started. Four years ago, as you can see, it's a test that's nationally normal. And uh from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty, we've gone from fifty five students to a hundred and one. You can see, we have very many students score a three plus on the AP test. You can hear a one to five. If you get three or more general generates polish credit. And you can see in that timeframe, last year, you're forty six percent of our students taking AP classes scored a three or higher. Again, it points to our staff, an incredible job that they're doing, and it points to our students and the hard work that they're putting into uh their academic performance right here. And if you, yes, click on that, if you would. Thank you. Dual credit, another big indicator. You, we're not gonna have to go to that, but if you wanted to go to that link right there, you can see all the credits, all the college courses that kids can get when they're, our students. Uh, get earned while they're at Lakeland High School, they get fifty seven college credits, up to seventy, uh seventy eight college credits. Depending on how they go on the AP test. You think about that, so the number of LHS students taking a college class, two hundred and twelve. Total number of college credits served at LHS this year, two thousand five hundred and fourteen, that's the savings, that's sixty dollars of credit of over a hundred and sixty three thousand dollars. That our families are saving, they don't have to pay because due to the advanced opportunity dollars that the state provides. That's free. We have seven students earn our associate of our degree this year, that's the most ever LHS. And uh they graduated this week from NIC with their associate parts, before they graduate from high school. Our graduates, uh graduation rate, ninety seven point five percent. Our CTE vocational uh population, I talked to Mr. Matilla, the uh principal over there at K-Tech. We send more students per cap or percentage than any other of the high schools here in the region. We send twenty five percent of our students for eleven, twelve degrees to K-Tech in order to get an industry certified certification. It's over fifteen different uh industry certified tracks that they did, they're fifteen percent of other schools. ISAT scores, we just finished that right now. I know that score was a little low, but state average is thirty two percent. That's because it's the test is a little weird. I can tell you that right now, I can talk to you more about that. Our kid, our, our students score forty eight percent. That's just a huge number, you know, on that test. E O A, the same thing, seventy five percent, state average sixty percent. So our, our students are soaring. Our staff is awesome. They are so incredible. It's, it's what they're doing with our kids. And uh, oh. And as we look at student performance also, we can take a look at student activity, behavior performance indicators. This is pretty cool. Volleyball team, first morning state championship ever. Wrestling team, dominance, thirteenth consecutive regional championships. We have two teams win the state sports championship award down at state tournament, the boys of two teams, that's just going. Yeah, speech state, BPA nationals, Katie Ryan, just found out she's not only one of the players of the year, the area player of the year. This is top volleyball player in the state of Idaho, which is awesome. Smiley, we have Skills USA, our CTE program. There's four places in the regional competition. They compete against K-Tech, which is their specialty. They get to draw from three different high schools who took three or four places from Lakeland High School. And so, and I had to put in Marine Private Mia O'Hara, I think two thousand nineteen grad. She completed the cruise port at Annapolis, first US Marine all feet double two. She was one of them carrying the banner, the flag, as they were going up, uh going up the hill. That's our graduate. That's Lakeland High School, that's Lakeland School District. I mean, that's, doesn't get any cooler than that. So uh. I'm gonna stop there because there's some more, just great information here that I want to, Carrie to share about how we're serving our students. To help them be prepared to go to the next one.
Students here is a P D M there, oh. Okay, also the whole thing's not finished quite, so is this? We contribute, but if you're right in the middle of the screen, use the plus and minus. Yeah. Okay. So, let's go one more. Okay, I think that should be good. Okay, so my name's Carrie Quett. I am a college and career advisor at Lakeland High School. This is my third year at the high school, my fourth year in the district because I started out at two level. And I do have notes with me today because I can talk a lot and this will help keep me alive, so. Um, the government task force identified proper college and career advising. Um, as one of the key factors for student success at the secondary and post-secondary uh level. And critical for Idaho to reach its goal of a sixty percent goal line, which is the number of high school graduates who enroll in and complete. Some kind of post-secondary education after high school. So college and career advisors, including myself, do this by directly advising students in grades nine through twelve. I also provide parents with all this information. And like Trent has gotten saying, there's a little bit more information that I put on these slides. I'm not gonna say all of it, uh but you're welcome to go back and look at, um, look at it. And there's also some links that you can put on. So I attend regions, uh events in our region and nation, so I can keep up to date and learn as much as I can. Including the National Association of College Admission Counselors National Advocacy Meeting last March. Where I was able to advocate for Idaho students with our state representatives at the Capitol in Washington, D.C. So that was a really amazing experience to be able to do that and make a difference. I was also selected by the Idaho State Board of Education this year to serve as Idaho's Region One Counselor Ambassador. In this role, I provide expertise and clear-to-peer support to college and career counselors in our northern region. I report progress and give feedback to the State Board of Education, and I work directly with the State Board of Education. To expand and improve college and career advising in Idaho. And I've been asked to serve in this role again next year. I'm also a member of the Professional Learning Community for Idaho College and Career Advisors. We meet monthly to discuss ways to better serve our students in Idaho. So at Lakeland, we believe that every student has unique skills, interests, and goals that should be celebrated and honed. So lead each of them into a career that offers a wage they are looking for along with personal fulfillment. We want every student to know about and understand that each educational path to a career is unique and just as important as the next. It's not just a matter of choosing college or no college. There are so many different options in between. That many students aren't even aware of, from apprenticeships to trade school to military. I want Lakeland students to be able to be aware of and understand all their options, to be able to choose the path that is right for them. We want every student to have a plan when they walk across the stage of graduation. So I help students discover their passion, determine their path, and follow the necessary steps each year to achieve their goal. And I wrote the details of what I do, um, but basically I provide information to both students and parents at each grade level. And I also go into classrooms and do a career and post-secondary readiness program each year that they're in high school. Helping students explore their career and educational options and assisting them with their post-secondary goals and plans throughout all four years of high school. Will increase the chances that each student will be well-informed, will follow the path that is right for them, and that they will be in a position to pay for it. College and career advising is not just about helping seniors. In addition to meeting with the students at all grades in my office from time to time. This slide does outline the key messages and the career units that I do in classrooms for grades nine through eleven, if you're interested, we can get that later. I do spend a lot of time with seniors throughout the year. I got like some of the main things that I do here with the seniors. Uh, for you to take a look at, uh, if you'd like, but I do wanna highlight a few of them. I do lots of classroom presentations and I do meet with each senior individually in my office at least once, some maybe twice. We host college application week to give seniors an opportunity during school to apply to college and other types of schools. And at the end of the year, we have a senior awards night to honor and celebrate all seniors who received scholarships. Enlist in the military and earn graduation course. So we're getting ready for that right now. It's just been a few weeks. I'm gonna stay on this slide for a little bit and tell you about the FASSA because I think that's really important. The free application for federal student aid is an important component of our students being able to afford college and other types of school. All of our seniors are eligible for financial aid in the form of federal loans and many of them are also eligible for work study. And grants that do not need to pay back. Completing the FASSA is also required for seniors with a two point seven or higher GPA. In order to be eligible for the Idaho State Opportunity Scholarship. That's an award that's up to three thousand five hundred dollars each year that a student goes to college in the state of Idaho. We have sixteen seniors so far this year, and there could be more to come because they give different rounds of this scholarship away. Uh, sixteen so far that have received this scholarship. That comes out to two hundred and twenty four thousand dollars over the next four years. That those sixteen Lakeland students can be using to help pay for their education. And we wouldn't be able to do it if they didn't fill out their FASSA. So I just wanna point out that uh. Not all those students have what you'd necessarily call financial need. So there's more reasons to fill out the FASSA than just giving them grants. Students can't access any of this financial aid or the opportunity scholarship unless they complete the FASSA. So the Lakeland FASSA completion rates are really important. This graph right here shows how many Lakeland students each year submit their FASSA in comparison with other areas schools. As well as Idaho's statewide completion rate. So the cordling schools are shown here in blue, Os Falls is in orange. And Lakeland is in green. And then the statewide completion rate is done with the black line. I've really been focused on getting seniors to submit their FASSA so that they can be eligible for financial aid. And as you can see, I started in two thousand nineteen, and in the last three years, our FASSA completion. Has been over sixty percent and well above other areas schools and the statewide completion rate. And I am focused on making sure this trend continues because it truly benefits all of our students. I help seniors understand the value in submitting their FASSA because they don't all understand that. Along with helping them through the process and groups score individually. Most seniors have no idea what the Pell Grant is and what it can mean for them. The Pell Grant is awarded to students with financial need in amounts up to sixty five hundred dollars that they don't have to pay back. Each year that they're in school and they fill out the FASSA. Each year, many Lakeland seniors end up being able to attend four-year colleges at colleges at a drastically reduced cost. Or attend NIC for free after submitting their FASSA. And many of these students have no plans to further their education, not because they didn't want to, but because they didn't think they could. I'm currently helping one senior who just found out that he has sixty three hundred dollars for filling out the FASSA. And he'll be able to use to attend NIC, something he wanted to do but hadn't planned on until last week. Because he didn't think it was going to be possible for him. Now he's signing up for classes in technology. Another senior this week almost cried in my office when I explained that his Pell Grant covered the entire cost of NIC's tuition next year. He would not be able to financially afford to attend college or pursue a career in engineering if he hadn't completed the FASSA. Those are just two students that I helped this week. There are many others with similar stories, including one that there's an article. And I put a link for at the end of the slideshow about uh one of our students who hadn't planned on completing his FASSA. Until I had a FASSA work day at school and told him to complete it. And now he's receiving the full Pell Grant and going into the automotive technology program at Parker Center here in Raftern. At no cost to him, something that he dreamed of doing but didn't think was possible for him. So these students are all getting to pursue education after high school that they wouldn't otherwise be able to because they completed their FASSA. This slide just gives a detailed breakdown of the FASSA numbers from the previous chart you wanted to take a look at later. And scholarships are another way that seniors can afford to further their education after high school. And that's something I also really focus on at Lakeland with seniors. We have a scholarship mall in the senior hallway where I print out paper applications of all the scholarships and put them out there. So seniors can actually pick them up and take them. And I also have a scholarship chart and there's also a link to that at the end of the slideshow. Um, that is on my website that seniors can access. And I give scholarship presentations in their classes as well. So as you can see here, about half of the senior class each year receives at least one scholarship. Some of them earn multiple scholarships. And they earn a lot of money from colleges, the state, private organizations. Last year's seniors used about three point five million dollars of the six point eight that they were awarded. To help them pay for their education. And that's about a hundred and seventy seniors, so that's a lot of money to help them pay for school. Many seniors also wouldn't be able to afford their education without the help of these scholarships. And here I have a breakdown of the number of Lakeland graduates with plans to pursue education after high school. So in two thousand nineteen, eighty one percent and seventy four percent of the class of twenty. Had some kind of post-secondary education plan directly after high school. And so that shows that in two thousand nineteen, seventy percent of our students were going to college. And eleven percent were following some other path, whether it be military, apprenticeships, or some type of workforce training or vocational school. And nineteen percent were going to work or hadn't decided yet. And then in two thousand twenty, during COVID, I think that sixty four percent of our students. Plus, well, plus ten, seventy four, four percent of our students still planning to go on to some kind of education last year with what was going on. Last summer, I think is pretty great. And uh you can see the breakdown of uh the ten percent that they were doing this next college. So my goal as Lakeland's high school college and career advisor is for Lakeland students to think. It's not a matter of if I'm going to continue my education after high school, but which educational path am I going to choose? We get closer to that goal every year by making sure each student is well informed about their options. Takes the necessary steps throughout high school to make sure they'll be in a position to pay for it and that they have guidance and encouragement along the way. And I just put a few links here if you wanna take a look. Um, my website, the scholarship chart. An example of a newsletter that I send to parents, and a twelfth grade month-by-month planning guide. The awards night video that we did last year since last year's ceremony was virtual, and then the article that I was talking about. Thank you very much for the. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present.
Boris Boris Chair Thompson?
Yes.
I just want to say one thing, she's really humble and she won't tell you, but she was awarded the CCR, I call it CCR college and career ready, but her college and career ready advisor for the entire state of Idaho, she was named. So she she was the one and she just wouldn't, I thought she was going to say it in there, but she didn't say it, so she she was she was named the one, so.
Congratulations. That's awesome.
I just want to say partly because of our, in large part, we have the communication state. We're going to have a very honorable special guest at Lakeland High School graduation this year. And there's only one graduation that fell onto the Department of Homeland Security. But Lakeland Lakeland High School, so we're very honored to have him.
Two that had come to our senior signing day last year, but it got canceled. Congratulations. Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you for your dedication to the students.
Okay, next on the agenda is the financial financial presentation by CFO Brian Wallace.
All right, Madam Chair, Mr. Lord, I'm going to try to be fairly quick with the financial report for, you know, we finished accounting for April of twenty twenty-one. And on the revenue side, you can see that we only collected a hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. Not a revenue month. And then we will get a main payment from the state. And then we start collecting final property taxes. When they start coming to the year, including that, we'll be really rolling in this first time right in July, but they get credited that this year. We're tracking fine as a percentage compared to other years. We're a little bit more reliant on property taxes, so the percentage will be down. The one thing that if there is a concern is that the state is with the recent legislative action that they did cut our discretionary funds. The factor will be at X amount of dollars per unit. And that was over twenty-seven thousand dollars per unit, and now it's down to twenty-two thousand dollars. So that's a mid-year cut. Roughly, you know, see the dollars, about a million dollars. Now we're back there in some of that and already moved some of the cost to S or one. So we are sort of back filling that cut with federal dollars. So we did have some of that question, that state's already approved that grant claim. But that's just sort of the reality and the adjustment of this year with twenty twenty, just it's not been a regular finance year for schools. But overall, we're still, because of those federal dollars, I'm ready to mitigate the impacts left. On the expenditure side, you know, again, we're this month about two point nine million, which is sort of our typical month for this year, and we're tracking for this year at seven one point three one percent, which is, well, we're two years ago here today and a little bit better than last year. Some of those percentages should be a little lower because now I'm shifting dollars out of this fund to the federal dollars, so some of those percent are showing up. But there's really no surprises for most of our buildings and departments as far as things that we're buying, as far as materials and supplies and services. For our schools, that's really slowed up. They, at this time of the year, we always ask them to put in their final POs so that they can order and they can receive the items before they can leave for the summer. You know, one that they're releasing the buildings. So our departments are tech and maintenance, they're still obviously ordering the things they need to keep operating, but for the components that leave, they're wrapping up their budget here as far as items that they'll order. On our fund balance where we're at, you can see last year, this year, today, we're at eight point we're at eight point three million, now we're at eight point nine, but that gap is a little more. We're starting to catch up where we were last year, which is not unexpected. We did build our budget that we you know, pretty much come in to a few thousand dollars more than expenditures. We're going to probably be close to maybe a little bit in red or a little bit in the black. Increase and decrease in fund balance, and that gap's going to keep shrinking then come the year. And again, if we look at the charts, we're moving along continuum. You can see in some of these other areas, they're a little farther along the continuum. This will really take a big jump in June. We accrue our salaries for July and August that the teachers have already earned. So they've done their contract, and so really when we do the June report, that red line really sort of catches up. But that expenditure just hasn't paid yet. But there's really no surprises on that. And again, by object, you can see that, you know, again, I have that two point nine million for the month. Two point five is salaries and benefits. That's the vast majority of where our money goes. And that we're tracking final salaries and benefits. And we're getting near the end of purchase services and our material and supplies that pop up. Finally, with enrollment, this enrollment is for May. I've always been reporting on the current month. You know, the finances are a month behind. And this is snapshot of time when I look, this always changes. We are from the same time last year, only down to fifty, because last year we dropped, you know, last year we're high to forty-six hundred kids. From the last time I did this report, we're down seven. So we've lost a few kids from last time I looked at the data. But you know, overall, we sort of held our own really for the enrollment. Given on other years, we actually sort of dropped more, and so we sort of maintained those numbers throughout this year, so that's good. And the final comments I'll make, I don't have any slides for, but the legislature finally did do their work and and passed some of the final education bills. And so last week, the State Department released some of the tools that help us estimate revenues and start getting ready for the budget process with the later model. But my treasures and me happening and myself will be usually working on the budget right now. And it's like that we're going to be able to the the state has provided more money for next year as far as discretion going throughout. They put a ladder the next step, so that does generate more dollars for us. So really, it looks like it's going to be sort of back to a normal year. So I think next year's budget theme will be, you know, we're sort of getting back to where we were two years ago, so some positions we didn't fund this year because we have budget cuts. Those will be restored, we'll have PE and music going again, and that element three two months is going to be getting back to the program of pre-COVID, which will be a good thing. And we also have a little bit of information on the federal dollars. I'll get more information for that tomorrow. The states have what they call their show where the State Department employees go to each region, maybe presentations, that's tomorrow in Cordelia and I'm attending. So that'll help with the final budget draft again. More information on the federal dollars will be coming our way with S and T. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any. Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Okay, so we're going to start out with a little report on Reach, which is LOA this year. LOA is Lakeland Online Academy. We're looking at how to describe the work that she's been doing with her team. But I just wanted a brief overview. I want to remind everybody, it's easy, and I was talking to the principals recently, it's easy to remember. We've come through COVID, we're on the other side. As far as our district, if normalcy is coming back, we're modified yellow as a state, we're back to stage four. I think it's really important that we remember. The Friday before school started, the board voted, we thought we were starting to get in orange, and when I worked with principals of their individual IPLPs, Individual Professional Learning Plans, their evaluation. They, people were putting together orange, and we were going to go a couple days a week, we were going to have modified. We're so much work put into it, and then switched to yellow, which was really good for kids. Mrs. Thomas, you know, kind of alluded to that in the presentation. But we have been through a lot this year, and I want to just give a lot of credit to Patty for what she did. Immediately started, how can I build this program? K eight, and then she really was kind of doing D twelve, then a certain D twelve, a little bit, then with secondary. She built this entire airplane after it already left the runway, like she had no warning and she didn't have anything. So we're calling parents, she's getting staff together, using our curriculum, how do we get online, and she's just done, I can't say enough positive about what she's done to get us to this point. And there was over four hundred families at one point that were on this program that she just put the ball and ran with it. Her staff is super appreciative. They have been so positive. And I went to their open house, they had their reach, and just families are super pleased with what's been going on. She's going to tell you a little bit about why they took the change from LOA to Reach. And then we'll tell you a little bit about why we turned in this report for this to be a separate entity, because if we had a deadline to be, if we didn't turn it in, it wouldn't be an option. So at this, we're going to do a little bit of information for you, let you know where we are as far as gathering the numbers of interest, what are our next steps are, and then where we are before.
Okay, thanks a lot. Now, Chair, please, I'm here to talk about learning. I think we'll go to the next slide, then I'll have a few notes that I can give myself as brief as possible. I just wanted you to know that, well, first and foremost, the staff has just stacked up and been outstanding. I mean, we started with three people, I believe, two or three that just have many grade levels they were teaching, and then as we gained more kids, and that's why we've spent more staff, but this has been just a really fun, very positive and very courageous team. That's been our kind of our motto this year, so listen to the speaker that said. Courage is, while the absence of your courage is fair walking, so we have teachers to say it. So anyway, I just want to commend the staff and give you that. But the other partners that we brought together this year were our families, and so this has been the neatest thing for me this year. It's just to be able to stretch and grow and find out what our families needed this year. For sure, we would create it to respond to the pandemic. But as we worked with our families this year, we're hearing that some of their kids have been more successful by learning at home with their family. It's serves some needs. We had a kid a little bit moved with a father to do some mission marketing, so he stayed in our home school while they were out of state. But last semester, actually, so we I took surveys every month just to hear how are we doing, because thankfully I know how everyone is doing. A couple of them really blessed, a couple of our teachers definitely have sub-state tech training in Canada. Our tech team, of course, here in the district is a part of us, but our families really told us what was going well, what wasn't going well, the right spots. And over and over each month, up to the last survey that we sent out to really think about next year, do you even want to offer a program next year? They said, I just, we're either going back to our schools or really need to find a place where our kids can have more social interactions because they're just needing their friends. And quite frankly, they're needing based on these kinds of teachers. And so that's really a testament to our eight schools that we've been drawing students from all year that many, many kids want to go back, and many parents want to see some of these same stuff they were having in schools. So what we really heard is that we wanted to create maybe a hybrid approach, and that's what parents and seniors are going through the most to us right now. Out of the hundred families we could survey, we're out of the hundred and fifty that we had, we reached a hundred. And about fifty percent of them said, yeah, we'd like to come back, but we would like our kids to be able to have some in school time. So that's what we've created, and a vision anyway, is a school that would be what we're calling a hybrid. So we kind of got to practice that during ISATs because Earth's weight bears been coming to an area that we didn't create over in the nutrition programs building. And it's been a really neat space, and I'll tell you, it's been wonderful to bring those kids in who have only seen each other on my little squares on the screen all year and watch them walk in and from the very minute know their teachers, smile at their teachers, some but comfortable hugging just because these are our families that I'm concerned because of COVID. And then the kids, they're just their friends, their community, their classroom community, and that and online. This only enhanced it so much that as I spoke about it and seeing the kids myself during ISAT testing, primary HPIs starting to ask their teachers, when do we get to go to the hub, is what we call the little space there. And some teachers right now, it's ISAT testing, our media, our kids in the art, and doing that. And parents have been asking, can we do this because the relationships have been formed, so. Long story short, what we are hoping to do then, and Dr. Mara asked me to do, is just find out, is there a need out there to continue next year? She had given a call to her major, and that was really eye-opening to me to really consider and think about. Or the families that perhaps have some background in homeschooling, have done it before or are currently doing it. And so in that conversation, and the conversation with the other homeschooling families, I'm understanding that there is a need out there, that these are patrons. We have many taxpayers that are not serving because they have their kids at home homeschooling or maybe with a different program. And we'd like to commit with them. And we have this year, and so we'd like, if there's any more, we'd like to get them. There are some that are in the other surrounding school districts that aren't meeting, and we would like to have them here. And I really think we can run a really strong school just with this hybrid approach. So I can show you our little inspirational video if I still have a little bit of time. This is one of our staff members who put this here a professional his wife.
Their intentional individualized personal and school are the need. The teachers at Reach Academy, we learn and should be a lifelong pursuit, not limited to school walls. We want to support your family in flexible education offers that don't add to your stress. Have you discovered that you enjoy having more time with your child at home, but still want options within your relationships and people? Would your child enjoy pursuing personal interests to the school credit? This flexibility that a hybrid online schedule If you can minimize distractions and give your child the flexibility to learn at their own pace with academic enrichment and depth, would you do it? Reach Academy in North Idaho is an online and hybrid option, child-centered, family-based education, supported by carried certified teachers and strong curriculum resources. If this vision of schooling sounds exciting to you, preserve your child's space now. Time is limited, and so is enrollment. The application to save this spot is open to Lakeland students and will open shortly to other students in the North Idaho region. Relationship, enrichment, achievement, community, hybrid. How high will your child be?
And I'm so proud to say we made an acronym because while we were trying to figure out what we did most of our lives by this option for our families. We went through a lot of different names, a lot of different words and acronyms. So that's Dave Jones, our longtime music teacher and the district leader, and worked at LOA this year, so he has awesome choices for that kind of stuff. There's more there, right? We have a second open house that will have me for the song if you'd like to come and see what we're doing and meet some of the people that are slated right now. We'll be working there and hopefully some paintings or some even people from other districts. If you have any questions for me or clarifications I can make about, you know, what we did this year or what we're hoping to do next year.
I just got one question. So will this when we were talking about the stable for next year, like if there was no phase and stuff, will we get switched to like a online type platform?
Yeah.
Is that anything? The platform, this is completely separate?
Completely separated, yeah. And these these students that were currently in LOA, they are in a system, it's hard to describe the email, but when I try to put that in email, they're currently at their home Um, when I try to put that in email, they're currently at their home school. So if they were at Apple or Lakeland High School, they were in their database. That means their attendance, their test, everything is attached to that school. Um, if we continue this program and offer this option for families, it has to be separated out because it can't, it's too difficult for. And it's really not ethical for us to be saying they're in Apple when they're really in an online program. So yeah, so that's why um Mr. Wallace and Chad persons, you know, submitted the fact that we could possibly have this online. Program and they were seeing interest to make sure that program can continue. Um, but it's the board's prerogative. If you don't want to off, offer this option for families, um, you certainly can choose not to do that. And we did, like Patty said, we felt a need in this community and there were so, I talked to every single high school family myself before they signed up. And it was just so much stress and anxiety when this first happened that we did a really good job in this district of providing a Lakeland education. Not just pushing everyone to IDLA, the, the state online program. So now at this point, we really are just advocating how many families are going to still be interested? And can Patty take this Reach Academy and continue to offer this for families in our district? Expand maybe the options for homeschool or people that feel comfortable online or really love that? And then maybe even go out to the greater community because no other district is going to continue this. Corley has a similar type of model. But he said they're, they're, they're not going to be offering the hybrid like we did last year. So I think we'll have a unique ability to, to impress some of these students, um, if that's something that we want. So our next steps is she's got another open house. I don't know who submitted article in the paper. Have they, was it article, what day was that? Tuesday. They say they have an article in the paper that she did, an article, several calls after that. Um, continuing to see how many families are interested. Then by the end of the month for staffing, um, right now we identified two staff that would stay with the program. There's several that would like to stay, but we can't over commit if we don't have the numbers and if we are continuing. So uh, we will need to decide before end of the year whether we continue or whether the, we not offer this option for families that we. Put staff back in the building. So that's really where we are at in this continuum. Um, any, who works here, Thompson?
Yes, are we going to continue to offer Play-Doh or some online option for high school students?
Yes, so the online uh program is the credit recovery. There's, we're taking the two groups of high school students. There's the credit recovery and students that qualify, APRIS learners, and they qualify for alternative school. They will be online with the Play-Doh program and still have the hybrid piece where they're coming in these once or twice to check in. Similar to Patty's point, she said about the face-to-face connection with the, so they will have that program right next door at Mountain View High School. The other group, and there were some families that had very um upper four tile, very high achieving students. That there was COVID or medical uh situations in their house that they chose to stay at home. Uh, those families, for the most part, are choosing to go back to the in-person learning, hope at Timberlake High School in Lakeland. But if there are any more of those students that continue to want to stay out for whatever reason. We're gonna do that through the school and through IDLA. Okay, there just is not enough need for that fraction that we have. So those students would still be able to have that option in our district through IDLA. And those, again, back to accreditation, it's accredited and they can go on to four-year colleges or two-year colleges or CTE or anything they want. But that would be the option for those students.
I definitely think it needs its own conversation. I doubt we could cover everything i- in this introduction. Because I have lots of questions and um what it looks like and um the location. And I, I think I would like to have more discussion on the whole idea. So you have, I have more questions about it, but.
Yeah, you, uh, and certainly, uh, Orchard Thompson can put it on the uh next agenda as well. Uh, we're gonna continue down the path of gathering interest, see what, uh, what that entails. And um certainly, Orchard Thompson can put on the next agenda for more discussion. Uh, it would be helpful if you have questions, if you could shoot me an email.
Yes.
So that I can have between Patty and I and the staff that we can come with the information that we need.
Thank you for all that work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I just want to say that we are in the middle. I have sent this out to the board update in a district website upgrade. There's just a couple of things I'd like to highlight. Um, we have website activity. There's analytics here that Chad put in so you can see all the way from the start of the COVID back in March. You can see how much we are getting hits back from the COVID first going and all those sessions. Everybody was at home, you remember? So you can see there's a lot of hits. And then you can see a couple more right before we start school and then over right before the end of the year. And so you can kind of see up to today and this is like May second, it gets bad a little bit. But you can also look and see how many users, the bounce rate, um, he explained that to us. The bounce rate means somebody's gone on only to look at one page. That's it. They're not exploring, they're just going for specifically one page. Um, you can see how many return and new visitors. I thought this was interesting. There's people, there's twenty-five people, uh seventy-four in Africa that are looked at our page, five hundred sixty-five in Europe. I mean, I, I was rather interested. Um, and you can see the number of mobile devices. It, how high that is versus desktop and the tablet. See, because some people are primarily looking at this phone, which makes it important that we have a content that is cell phone friendly. So we really um have worked on that as well. This is just FYI, if you want to look at later. Um, I just would like to think, uh, Chrissy, she is a graphic, I mean, she just can take any piece of paper or anything and turn it into making it look pleasing to the eyes. So she put, there's a lot of white space, a lot of blank and, and just, and so she put, you know, for instance, making this on. There's the right, when you see the board trustees, you used to have to click on board of trustees. It wasn't in the dropdown menu. When you, if you didn't know to click on it, you would not even be able to see pictures of who the board was. So she um was able to change it, she made it in the dropdown menu and then she put these pictures there. Just showing you, this used to be just this long list of things and it just wasn't visually pleasing. This now, when you go on this site to look at our school report card, I mean, she said the same thing, but you can see it's very easy. It looks nice. There's a link to go to. It just, it really is a great upgrade. Chrissy's been working on nights and weekends on this project. Uh, something about our district, she put our mission statement. She will not get the board's mission statement now that that was completed on Tuesday. Um, she will put that in, but you can see how it just looks nice. Um, this, I don't, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, but if you ever looked at the webpage, and I know Board Chair Thompson has. This was like pages and pages and pages of history. Some people are interested in that, but to scroll through, it really wasn't customer friendly at all. So something that she did, this is just a screenshot, but I wanted to show you. She gave the, in all of the information to people, showing when the district started, all the different things they've done. And you can just go through the entire history of, but she put pictures, made it flip like a book. So it's really pretty, Lakeland Senior High School nineteen seventy-nine. Um, anyway, so all of this is just really um great stuff that she has done. I just want to acknowledge that, that that has been a lot of work that she's been going through. And now we also are doing a pilot right now with one of our tests. Um, and you'll see it on a finance report for a stipend, a short, it's very small stipend that we're gonna offer again to students for transitioning. There's a lot of outdated pages. Um, we went through every single page and looked at what was behind, was it up to date, what we don't use? Um, and you, you did do an update to the school board policy page that you might want to look at because that was a concern from some board members. So um, uh, so you, you just want to look at and then really want you to see, are there suggestions? Because there were several suggestions that board members had. Um, there's some that we had just to make it user-friendly and visually pleasing to the eye. So please take a moment, look at it, send me any ideas or updates or hey, this doesn't look good or this isn't what we're looking for. Especially on, on more board pages of what you offer, what's, you know, I told Board Chair Thompson, we'd like to do a bio on each of you and have that available. What people kind of have, whether you do a little video, like thanks for being in our district, or if you do a little bio about yourself. If other districts have that and it kind of personalizes you all, and so that's, that's something we've been talking about as well. But this was a um, a concern for board members, so I wanted to let you know that we did address it if we were starting to do work, but we need your feedback.
We should have a, what's called a website strategy document that actually outlines all of that. I mean, there's a professional way that all that happens where everybody chimes in and then, you know, like a plan. So everybody stays on.
Send me a template for that? Okay, that would be great. Um, this isn't really our area of expertise. We're in education, but everyone has to have a webpage. So that's us, and that's something that you specialize in. We can certainly use that. That would be great.
Yeah, the tech guys are probably familiar, but yeah, I can do that.
So a lot of kudos. Uh, thank you to Chrissy for putting in the hours and the game for our new webmaster. We're looking at that. Um, trustee Kristen, would you like to give that thing?
Sure, I can remember everything we talked about. Um, I do remember through the IBV meeting that uh we went back, we got rid of the remote learning days that you were referencing. Um, and we're back to just the uh regular snow days. And the way that happened was Ms. Sexton was able to meet with the uh principals and the leadership and added. Um, ten minutes to the day at the elementary school and five minutes to every day at the uh high school and the middle school level. So by just adding a few minutes every day, then the whole remote learning snow day thing was remedied. So uh, that's sort of back to um normal. The other thing that we went through was the uh APE stipend and how that was gonna work and added some verbiage. Because the um, the, you know, the state stuff could change at any moment, so we made sure to notate that. But you know, this is what it looks like this year, but next year, or three years down the road, it might be something different. Besides, a document has to be looked at every year anyways. Um. And then uh, seemed like there were some other things that I probably. Do we discuss it? I have a note that we discussed. Um, oh yeah, also the halftime FTE employment. Um, because what happened was there were some in the district that didn't qualify for benefits and that some did, even though they were. It, it, it wasn't an equal distribution, we'll say. So uh, in the document, we put that the halftime FTP or FTE employees uh will be covered at full time at a hundred percent for their benefits. Because it was, uh, was it thirty hours? Is that what it was? Was the cutoff period was? So they, some were covered and some weren't.
And that's for certified stuff, right? Because you keep the thirty on the rule for class.
Right, right. Well, and then document only covers certified, right?
Yeah.
Yep. And then the document, um, that was another question, or I didn't write an answer down. I think somebody, maybe you can answer it. Um, so the IBV um is representative through the LEA and I think she said sixty-seven percent of the staff belong. But does the IBV cover all the teachers, all the certified?
Okay. Could be counselors, nurses, everybody that is certified.
Right, okay. Um, and then the input comes from the surveys that uh. Jason sends out, I couldn't do his last name, it's Brad, Brad Gray, it slipped in my head. Um, and then. We're still working on some extracurricular and I think this is about done.
Yeah.
For the meeting, but yeah, we're making progress. So then when we get through the whole document, we took a week off because everybody's schedules didn't mesh. Um, then it'll come to the board, but you can still look at the document and the notes on the drive. And if you have any questions, ask Dr. Meyer himself or whoever. Any other questions?
Thank you. Okay, just reminding you, we, and just for the public to know, we did our new board trustee training. Uh, the majority of the board was there, that they did on Tuesday in the morning. Then in the afternoon, we prepared a new mission statement for the board of trustees. They read, they finalized that. We do have a joint board meeting with the Corley District on boundary line adjustment. And that will be uh Tuesday at Neatown Center in Corley. So if anyone in the public would like to come. Uh, the curriculum workshop, I think is being rescheduled, somebody said, so I'll have to update that. And we do need to um schedule board book training. And the next steps in our plant facility, let me plan for the workshop for that, because that will be expiring in twenty twenty-two. So. Budget considerations, uh, Mr. Wallace talked a little bit about his very tight timeline. One thing also that's really going to affect the Corley is over a million, post falls to seven hundred, that's six, over, so between six and seven hundred thousand. But the public education stabilization funds are not available according to the legislature for two years. We put it on hold. So anytime you go over advanced opportunities, Kerry Quet was talking about how much advanced opportunities. Transportation can go over, um, increases in enrollment. This, this is something that happens, superintendent's uh, uh, priest nervous that this is on hold. The governor's office that, with the, the people of council said, oh, we'll get, next year, we'll work with them. We'll talk to the legislators, we'll get something worked out next fall. But as of right now, it's not, and this is uh. Very concerning to the superintendent. Brian already said he will update you. As you know, we moved to stage four. Um, something else, when Mr. Wallace said that we're gonna kind of be back to normal to two years ago. Um, also that I don't think it's quite, usually I'm more rosy than his, but I don't think it's gonna be as, I just want to warn you. I don't think it's gonna be as good as he said today. We had ISA coming, and he is going tomorrow to, to the training. But they have held back again in technology, they held back in both of those technology line items. And they have held back professional um PD money also. And then they say that they, it is really a media campaign to say that they are gonna make us back full again. But they are looking to backfill the holes with federal S R dollars, which there is already people talking about a lawsuit. I'm just warning you, I'm trying to be a Debbie Downer, but it's not gonna be. And she's the least down. I'm not trying to be, sorry.
No, I'm glad of course.
I just want to be, to really kind of warn the board is that. There, there is possible even thought that it might not be legal to backfill the state money with federal dollars. Um, and they're holding some as a set aside. There's Brian who looked yesterday, that we do not even have. He said, oh yeah, you guys have the S R two dollars in your GRA, which is in your grant universal account. Spend the money first, put it in your receipts, you have to ask for permission for any capital projects. There is a lot of red tape and there's a lot of steps. It's not just like, oh, here's your money and go do what you need to do. Uh, there's a lot of constraints. And I just want to let you know, I, I, there was a very, it wasn't very rosy today when the superintendents, they met today in here. Um, Brian will find out more tomorrow, but I just, I really want to make everyone aware that there are some real red flags that I want to talk about going forward as, as we plan. So um, not to be damn, but to end on a positive note, I want to let you know, uh, Mr. Derek already talked about how great his scores were. Um, Timberlake High School this year, and you can see Lakeland High School just pointing out that the mean total score here is here. And there's Timberlake High School and Lakeland High School, Mr. Derek talked about that. And you can see the district total, the state total, and the total group. But you can see, we, we beat the, the state in bowl and uh, so it, it's uh, it's really good news. You can look at that later. Um, now. There's uh some information that you've got via email that I think needs to be addressed in a timely fashion. Um, and I really have asked uh Ms. Sexton to come and just fill you in about an idea that we have to address the issue that I think would be happy with.
Yes, so um, just to give you kind of the Reader's Digest version of what occurred and how we got to where we are. Um, when we ran the instructional levy in twenty nineteen. Uh, on that levy, there was money for two armed guards, one for the first year, one for the second year. So we hired the first one. Um, and then we weren't sure we were going to be able to hire the second one because we pulled back. But uh, we did hire Brad Schultz. Um, but while we were going through that process, the Cooney County came to me and said, we really, it's really important to us that we have an SLR in your district. So I'm going to put one there. And so we talked about what's the cost of the district because we need to, you know, know that. And he said, no, I'm just. And he said, no, I'm just, I'm just going to put him there, that would be his assignment. So for over a year, we had an SRO that covered Twin Lakes and Garwood. At the end of last year, I was told that that would continue this year. So we placed the newest armed guard at Lakeland Junior High because we lost the RAC M SRO. In November, they made some changes at the county level and that SRO had to go back on patrol. So I spent this entire year working with the county, trying to find a way to resolve that. And I told Dr. Meyer yesterday, hindsight is 20-20. And I was so focused on remedying that, fixing it, what I should have done and what we, what we are recommending that we do now. Because safety is our number one priority. And we did promise Twin Lakes and Garwood that they would have coverage at those schools. What I should have done is use the current armed guards to help cover that school while we figured this out. So moving forward, what we are proposing is that, and I've already talked to Mrs. Murphy next door at Lakeland Junior High, who is despondent over not having her armed guard at the school five days a week. But we will, Brad Schultz will cover all three of those schools until the end of this year. And then what we're recommending is that we use our safety director's school monies next year to hire another armed guard to cover Twin Lakes and Garwood.
Okay, so you're saying for the purpose of finishing this year, which is three weeks or something, we'll just share, rotate this one person, and the next year, hire somebody for the position. Now, I don't remember if this was the last conversation, but I do remember, I thought we had an MOU because, or maybe that was just a verbal understanding, I thought it was a MOU where it wasn't going to cost the district any more money, that the deputy would be allowed to act as the SRO unless there was a call. And then obviously, he would have to leave and go to the call. That was the last thing I remember was the agreement that was made with law enforcement in charge at that time.
That was the previous sheriff, though.
Right.
Well, it was, it was a previous captain, really. So just to kind of remind the board, we as a district went to the county commissioners at least four times.
Brian, Lisa and I went four times to try to get a piece.
To request an SRO and the county commissioners were very adamant that we weren't in these taxpayer dollars to put a deputy at our school, if you want, if you want one, you pay for it. But Captain Street, so I'd worked really hard to build a relationship with the county. And it was really important, Captain Street, that we figure out how to make this work. And so he just, he was fully staffed at that time. And so it felt like he could assign deputy classroom to those two schools and not be shorthanded on the rest of routes. When the new captain, when he retired and the new captain came in, he had some different ways of thinking. He's still very much supportive of the SRO program, but felt really strongly that if we were going to have an officer, we were going to pay for that. And the cost for us, where they wanted a 70-30 split and with our other two agencies, it's a 60-40. And so that was kind of part of what we were negotiating was, I really, I can't, I can't do a 70-30 split with you and 60-40 with our other two partners. And they pay their officers a lot more money than those other two agencies do. So even as we started talking about, what is a 60-40 split, which they couldn't make work, but it was still $20,000 more to the county than what we paid to the other two agencies. And almost $20,000 more than we would pay if we had our own armed guard. So as much as I would love to continue to try to work on that, when you're thinking about taxpayer dollars, there are, there are two things, I guess, I'm thinking of. One, with an armed guard, and Mrs. Thomas could speak to this, but with an armed guard, they are our employees, so they're in our building, the whole type of kids are there. But when you have an SRO, they're, they're also law enforcement. So as Trustee Grissom just said, if they get a call, they have to leave. And then that leaves our buildings unattended, so that's why we're recommending.
And Mr. Derek has one full time, I mean, he can't imagine not having his person.
When I sent an email today to Mrs. Murphy next door and then to the two principals at Garwood and Twin Lakes and kind of outlined my plan, she called me immediately. Well, first she sent me an email and said, these are all the reasons that I don't like this plan. And I knew that was going to be her response, because as Mrs. Thomas alluded to, when you have that person, you really start relying, and Mr. Derek had mentioned, talked about that too, but you really do start relying on that person, it's their integral part of your team. And so for them to have to kick him up two days a week is a struggle. I had a reminder, we only, only have like three or four weeks left, so it's, this is a band-aid to get us through. But we did promise Twin Lakes and Garwood that we would have coverage there. So as I said, what I should have done, and if I could go back and do it again, I would have made this earlier while I was negotiating with the county. At this point, I think that's the best way.
Lisa, how long have Twin Lakes and Garwood been without an SRO?
That's November.
Oh, okay.
Yes, that's why I said, it's hindsight's 20-20, if I could go back and fix that, I would definitely do this differently. I just didn't realize that it was going to, that it would be so ongoing, I guess, but it would be a faster pace.
Well, I guess at this point, I mean, this is where we are, I guess, it just brings up so many questions in my mind. We had the money, the community agreed to pay the money, they gave us the levy, but then we didn't have the body, so.
We did, we did. So we hired Brad Schultz. And so because we had the SRO at those two schools, we went ahead and still hired at the armed guard, promised to patrons, but we put him at Lakeland Junior High.
Oh, gotcha, okay, okay, gotcha.
So that's the body that I would have put there without having had the SRO. And that's why it makes sense to me.
Okay, yeah, I was just trying to, you know, with the information that came through, I'm trying to get it clear in my head.
The information was parents wasn't all after it. We did follow through, it's just that the SRO was being placed there for free. So she reassigned one and said, oh, you're going to help that, because they had tough acts at the SRO program here in Racton as well. So we're hoping that program comes back, but we really have thought, we are going to use the safety program money and use that grant to fund another, because we did ask for more armed guards, you know, in our levy proposal, you weren't here yet. But we, we do think safety is really important and we want to hear, we heard what the patrons' parent emails. And I understand where they're coming from, it's very important, we agree with what their concerns are. So we're just trying to show patrons right now that we heard you, you're right, we agree that this is what our temporary fixes, and then this is what our longer term solution is.
But something that made me happy in reading those emails and hearing frustration from parents' voices as they were writing is how much buying we have from our patrons with our safety program. Whether it's an SRO or an armed guard, it's important, parents that we have coverage in our schools. So that made me feel really good about this program, that we have been kind of out in front, the first to state this program. The way that our patrons are embracing this, making me feel very proud. And I do want to be responsive to them. So based on, I guess, a new footprint need tonight, if we're able to move forward, I would recommend that also fill out a paperwork for our HR director to post an armed guard position, it's a lengthy process, I have one. Trustee Irons has participated in the past in the energy process and it's well-ust, so for sure, we want more to respond to that team. And I would like to give that ball rolling and then I will respond back to the email and I will include everybody on the email and file. To those parents who reached out to me, we'll clarify.
Lisa, have one more question regarding the screenshot that was later attached to the one email, was that monetary amount incorrect?
What she, I don't remember exactly, was that the $5,000?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, so he, part of the negotiation was the 70-30. And so I explained, I just can't do that, it's not fair to the agency. I really need to 60-40. So then he came back and said, well, the difference between 70-30 and 60-40 is about $10,000. And I, but I just kept saying that I can't do more for you, so there's. And so then he came back and said, well, we'll pay $5,000 if you'll pay $5,000. And so Dr. Meyer and I spoke, what the patrons and what that parent didn't understand was, it's not just $5,000 from the government paying now. Because it's $20,000 more because they pay so much more. So the conversation that we really had was, is this the best use of our taxpayer dollars? Or is it better for us to pay even a little bit less and have an armed guard who's there all the time and not hold it? And so that was the conversation. So some of the information that I've given.
The full picture, it was more about, like you're saying, it was the percentage, that was the difference between the percentage split that they were willing to split, but the cost was still this, this much more, okay.
Our county sheriff, he's definitely getting a much higher rate than. In fact, our SRO at Silver Lake would get a large increase if we left the police department and became an armed guard at Silver Lake, doing the same job basically, some of that. So we just, our, our small group of agencies just don't have the dollars.
Right. Well, I think we have to remedy the situation, like you're saying, as soon as, with whatever we have to remedy it, right, right now, for these last few weeks and then move forward with the hiring process, and what do you guys think?
I think that's exactly what we should do. I really like having the armed guard, you know, I like the inter-agency relationships, and it's always good to keep those cultivated. But there's something special about that. You know, Kathy said that, how, you know.
Intercontinental.
It really is, absolutely.
You know, I think that's the right thing to do, I think, all around.
But reacting quickly is the right thing.
Yeah.
So we can have somebody who pays money, I also have to give them something, so I know what days next week will be there.
Board Chair Thompson, do you have any reservations about getting an armed guard posting and going?
No, I have no reservations on it. I think, I'm disappointed that I didn't understand this was going on, and it's been going on since November. But that being said, as was pointed out in the emails to an article that went to the press, we did state that the next armed guard was going into Twin Lakes and Garwood, and we did not uphold that. We sent that armed guard to Lakeland and I realized, to Lakeland Junior High. And I realized it was circum, some circumstances and events that occurred that didn't allow us to keep our word, but we need to make it right, and we need to do it quickly, in my opinion.
So we met, we have that short-term solution, which I think sounds like everyone is on board with that. Even the principals, very sad to give up, but there's, like you said, a couple of weeks left. And then just the unit trusty vein, the reason we wanted to perform now is there goes, it's a long process. They have a psych eval, they have a fitness test, polygraph, there's a shooting range, I mean, there's a lot. And these guys can play, they've been through it. It takes, like, we have to start right now to try to get it done from the beginning of the school so that Twin Lakes and Garwood pass. Oh yeah, that's what I meant, I said, yeah, start moving on that and get that moving so that we have somebody who pays first day school. That's why we need to.
Definitely, we need to make that right.
Do you know what the time split is going to be for him between these three schools?
He will, he'll be at Twin Lakes and Garwood two times a week and then he'll be at Lakeland Junior High three times a week.
Okay. And that's not listed publicly when he'll be there, right?
And I specifically asked them to, when they get the schedule, to not have the days of each day, so that they're.
So Lisa, is he sharing his time on the days that he's up there, half with Lake, or Twin Lakes and half with Garwood?
Yes, so that he can be in each of those schools twice per week.
Okay.
He's going to split it up, though, he's not going to make it the same day so that people don't know, like, oh, if he's not here, he's not going to be here the right day.
No, I understand that, but if I'm understanding your math correctly, that means that each school only gets an officer one day a week, because a half on one day and half on another, and then the junior high gets him three days a week. Is that correct?
It is, and I, I mean, that's something that we, if you would rather, I look at it differently. The only reason that I did it that way is that at the end of the year at junior high, there are, there tend to be some bigger behaviors than you have at the elementary level. And also he's become a pretty integral part of the junior high's procedures, and so they'll have to make some pretty big shifts to kind of cover some of the things that he does place there. So I'm just kind of honor that too, without, while still making sure of their coverage.
Okay.
Recognizing that when we start and we fall, we'll have one person split between those two schools, so they'll, they're, they will be seen every day at each school.
Okay. Okay.
Would you prefer that they do it differently?
I'm just asking for clarification, I mean, I know there's three weeks left. And, and what we said to the taxpayers, we're not, we're not adhering to. And we're making the best of the situation that we can for the next three weeks, and I understand that.
When was the last time we talked to the sheriff, the sheriff or the captain?
Last week. Last, the final decision happened last week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, thank you, Dr. Meyer. Moving on to action items, the first action item is regarding sending out the certified contract letters on June 1st to be returned by June 11th, 2021. Brooke, do you have anything to say regarding that?
This is just per state statute, the more established the date, and definitely hoping we'll be done with negotiation in order. We do have to have contracts issued by July 1st, we do have some flexibility because we don't finish up with negotiations. This is the date that kind of matches what we've done in the past.
Okay.
And is this just a, I'm sorry, ma'am, sorry, were you finished?
Yes, I am, go ahead, Trustee Grissom.
Is this just a blanket letter or, I don't, we don't have anything to look at, so I'm not sure what we're sending then?
No.
Is it individual?
It's a contract, it's a contract for us to send out contracts. When we send them out electronically, and so that is just the window that we can send them out and then the due date.
So right now, you're only approving the date, because the board, there, it has to be the one who's assigned in 10 days.
Right.
Board Chair Thompson and HR Director Cunningham met, and they have got a system where they have, we have the next meeting. They'll be, she'll be looking at all of those, ahead of time, the board will see every single one of those in the database of how the teacher, and then you'll know, you'll see a template of the contract, so you'll see that, and then you'll see a database of all the teachers that are in the offer contract. She'll send them out, they have 10 days to come back. We're going to follow the same thing with classified, here's what the letter of intent looks like, here's the list of the people we asked for the. Here's the list of the people we'd ask for the letter of intent, come back, and then admin, here's the matrix grabbing, here's the admin contracts. You'll see those, and then you will decide what you're, whether you're gonna accept those or not, and that's in a, this, I'm hoping three meetings.
Okay.
I'm hoping two meetings. Okay, today's, yeah, me too, meetings. So you'll see the actual names, this is just the.
Okay.
So does anybody else have any questions regarding this?
No, man.
Okay. Then, could I get a motion regard, uh, regarding sending out the contract, certified contract letters on June first twenty twenty-one to be returned by June eleventh, twenty twenty-one?
I move that we send up certified contract letters on June first, twenty twenty-one to be returned by June eleventh.
Hearing a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, next action item is the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two certified, or excuse me, classified salary matrix.
So, um, Board Chair Thompson, if, if Mr. Wallace and Mrs. Cunningham could come up and I just would like them to get a little background and context of why we're bringing this to the board.
Thank.
Madam Chair, I'm with the board, so we um are looking at, when we looked at our current classified salary majors, it, it changed a few years ago, and Dr. Meyer came on. And at that time, it was pretty competitive, and we really haven't changed that matrix since that time. Um, except for like if there was a two percent raise across the board, that's where we broke through. Um, this year really pinned critical like, that is obviously that our, our matrix is just not where salaries are going in our region right now, competitive. And so been very difficult to on both hire staff, um, on the classified side, and also sort of maintain opportunities out. And, and so we had a couple of goals, and we knew we had to look at, see what could we do, and so the overall goals were one, we wanted to make sure that we were moving towards and being competitive with the general labor market, that we're competitive with our other two Cooten County post falls and quarter jobs, uh, classified neighbors, so we looked at that data. Um, and that, we really wanted to get, it looks like, when you look at everybody's hiring, you know, it's twelve, thirteen bucks an hour. We had, we had our makers on the part of that, it was nine bucks. Um, and so we knew that we had to move and, and get to where that twelve is, and then the last consideration, of course, is could report this. Um, because if we're gonna increase our beginning wages, we have to honor our veteran staff, because if they're making the same exact, if someone just was hired that that causes some heartburn, um, just by themselves, so we, our, our previous matrix had a few more columns, and and had a few more rows, so we started to collapse some of that, because we didn't have any staff on the part of that of our nine dollar and our other columns, so that, that really wasn't a huge impact, because it wasn't impacting our people. Um, but we looked across the board, and we pretty much generally took our, um, after we did that collapse and said, well, we'll move those people to this column, the few. We, we did about a five percent overall increase um, across the board, and got to that salary of twelve. And so what's the fiscal impact if, if we move this through, people are going higher? Well, it's, not only will some of our staff get on the matrix and be getting a higher wage, but they'll also move down a step, which is a little bit more too, so it's you know, some will leave and some will come, so it, it's hard to say what the pure impact is, so, but probably around six percent across the board, we're sort of eating that, so I took a look and said, all right. We pay, um, but this year we budgeted sick in the general fund, sixteen million dollars, and we're tracking right there for classified salaries across the board. Um, and if I look at like our last month, we spent about five hundred thousand in one month on classified salaries. So, you know, six percent is about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, you take mandatory benefits on top of that, it's about another you know, twenty or so, so the impact will, is around four hundred and twenty thousand dollars roughly, that, that's my estimate, we won't really know the real impact, so we'll start having real data. But as I'm building the budget now with our levy revenues that are going up a little bit, and with our increased proportion of the state, you know, um, the legislative that, you know, I'm building that into um, next year's budget, and it looks like you know, how we would probably end up landing with the teachers and some of the other costs we have coming, but we're gonna be able to make it work. Um, because we're gonna assume we're gonna get a few more kids, that'll generate some more dollars. So, we think this is a good step to sort of keep this in line with, with what's happening in our county. Um, it's probably not the last step, I think we're gonna have to look at this again next year, and say, did what we do, did it keep us to where we needed to go, it makes me really nervous, but um I just think it's sort of a we, we can't avoid, we just, um, it's just tough to bring in right now, and you're seeing the signs that we're going to see. I think this will be, obviously, we'll obviously provide our classified staff, that'll be the biggest bump, but, you know, a, a veteran staff, we will have added um in years, so, and that's, I think, sort of have to, uh, and I think we're at a time where we can't afford it, and so our recommendation is to adopt this, and then, um, we'll closely monitor our costs next year, and evaluate next steps for future discoveries. And then, if there's any questions, uh, I, I want to thank Brooke, uh, HR Director Cunningham. Um, she did heavy lifting as far as the work, I, I just get a talk, or she do. We're here for any questions or, uh, concerns, comments.
So the, uh, this sub-rate or this step column, is that referencing years of service or experience, or what is that?
Yeah, for us, the, our guest aides or, or whatever that is filling into that.
Oh, okay.
Just the red one.
Yeah, and so that doesn't reflect like our guest teachers, that's different.
Right, right.
But just those positions that they have to.
And then this years down, every year they go down. Also, Brooke will look if somebody moves from a different area, and they have experience, she'll say, how many years of experience do we have in this type of position, she can place, recommend, and she takes it to the budget team, and the team decides where they get placed after she gives us a recommendation.
Yeah, okay.
And we did have to reclassify a couple of positions, I mean, over, of course, we had to move over, because like Brian said, there was three columns that really weren't being utilized anymore, but we did have to Krista Wains, for example, that's been a really difficult job to fill.
Right.
Um, we did move them.
We were in the cross, I'm accountable for that, so those are some.
Right, right, yeah, well, when they can go to fast food or somewhere and start at thirteen, fifteen bucks an hour. You know.
And so for Wednesday, seventeen.
Right.
And, you know, we knew that, you know, we could probably, you know, the challenge we have is how aggressive can you be within what we can be for.
Right.
So we're trying to do, you know, find that balance.
So you think we're gonna be right about it, uh, what you say, nearly half a million dollars in the, in?
I think a little less, I think it will, I think the net impact of this will be four hundred to four twenty. And we'll, I'll look at you know, we'll look at the, you know, the salaries that go from there, I think that we're gonna you know, it's, it just, it really is a challenge right now, and um you know, as Dr. Meyer said about what this big budget is, you know, I think I said earlier with COVID, there were dark clouds in the horizon, I could clear it up some, but there's still a lot of unknowns.
Right.
And, but, you know, we do have some flexibility with, you know, we had to try to bridge the gap, this thing sold down. We just want to maybe fund a position, which will, we're choosing the guidance board with all those restrictions we have, but there's definitely restrictions to maintain operations, keep buildings clean, so we could do that, you know, we have some of that flexibility for a couple of years, or I think we can be smart and make this happen, and so you know, afford it.
So would we have to reduce staff in order to offer the increase, or could, is this, is your projection based upon the amount of staff?
I know, over, yeah, so we're not looking at that, um, you know, I, at some point, if we really had to, I mean, if we had to take this matrix and raise it another twenty percent, yeah, we could afford that with some other staff, but we think we can maintain our staff and still do this, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're not, we're not anticipating any protections. Yeah, I think we'll be okay, but you know, whenever you, these are the decisions that drive the budget.
Right.
And it was called blue one, because this is, like I keep saying, you know, salaries and benefits, that's really what drives the public. But I think this is a, uh this is a have to. Well, keeping consistency, turnover is, is such an expense, that you, you know, are reaching, but if we can get some consistency and retain the people we have, and make it, you know, so that people want to stay, because, you know, it's a little more viable.
Well, and a lot of those people are all building relationships with students too, I mean, janitors, the bus driver, I mean, all these people, you know, um, custodians and women.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I mean, one thing, I mean, we, to compare it to Silverwood, probably isn't really quite here, because Silverwood doesn't provide benefits to wherever you do, and so, I mean, at least that, you can help in that area and justify it in that area.
And the majority of the positions at Silverwood are seasonal, so, you know, you, you're gonna get paid seventeen dollars an hour year-round, all those teenagers.
They're not open year-round, but.
Yeah.
The cost of living in our area.
Yeah. It's, it's crazy, it's insane.
It would be somewhat comparable, so I think the last step was, is it ten dollar an hour employee typically costs a company somewhere between sixteen and twenty bucks an hour, so if we were at twelve, we'd still be somewhere near seventeen, eighteen dollars, or, of course, they don't do full-time, this would be full-time, so it, it is still comparable with the rate, but I, I, I have no problem with, and like you said, the turnover, constantly having to hire and interview and background checks and fingerprints, and you know.
No, and I honestly, I still feel like we're gonna see that, because it seems such a a huge lift in the cost of living expenses and stuff, that this, this helps tremendously for us to retain our current staff as well.
Right.
And recruit, because, right, we normally have almost forty, between thirty and forty summer maintenance crew, and when we talked to Mike last week, we, how is it we have six? And then five, we can't even, we can't even do our summer work at this point, if we don't.
That's why it's good.
Yeah. So, maybe this will help.
Maybe.
Also, um, yeah, it is on the agenda for approval, uh, so we can move forward with this, or, um
to, it is attached to July one, with the fiscal year, we were changing.
Um, respecting that this is presented on the top, it states it's a draft, does that just mean that it's there's not gonna be any changes once we approve it, is that correct?
It's a draft, it's how you approve it.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone regarding this?
Not for me.
I'm good.
No.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Um, that being said, I need a motion to approve the classified salary ma- matrix, excuse me, a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two classified salary matrix as presented.
I'll move to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, classified salary matrix as presented.
I will say that.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, next item, action, action item is the resolution for hazard mitigation plan. Um, it was brought to my attention that our vote, uh, to approve wasn't acceptable by the county, we apparently needed to have a resolution. Chrissy or Lisa, would either of you like to speak to this?
I'm on my way.
Thanks, Lisa.
I was dropping everything, so I was trying to get here. Um, yes, so we submitted our minutes from the new the county and the districts all has a mitigation plan. And, uh, within a day or two, we got an email back from Rachel Irish County saying that they require a resolution instead of just a minute. So, it's, it's basically, um redoing, I guess, what we've already done, but in the format that they're requiring.
Okay.
I wasn't aware that that's what they required until they sent the package.
Who is the, uh, steering committee in the planning partnership? It says it's described in there, but do you know who that is, is that something within Lakeland?
No, that's up in county.
Okay.
And we're actually, Daniel Robinson and I are on that.
Okay.
As, as part of the work to tie out.
Yeah, okay.
Does anyone else have any questions regarding this? No, I don't. Okay, thank you, Lisa. And I need a motion to approve the resolution for hazard mitigation plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for hazard mitigation plan.
I'll second the motion.
Right, having a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Roll.
Oh, that's right. We need a roll call vote.
Trusty Bane?
Yes.
Trusty Nature?
Yes.
Trusty Grissom?
Yes.
Trusty Irons?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, the next action items are uh, is an art appreciation course at Lakeland High School. Um, and there's an attached art appreciation new course proposal.
Questions, Mr. Vera, to say as well. Um, as you are considering the course proposals tonight, I do, I think it's important for you to know that at Lakeland High School, the staff there is really committed to a student center master schedule, and these are courses that, uh, students have been requesting. Um, humanities is sometimes the hardest spot to build, because if you're not, they inquire creative, artistic, there are not as many options, and so they were really trained that election, elected portion of their syllabus.
So, i- is this something that we should move to the curriculum? Um uh, workshop and, and meeting that we're having? I mean, that is what we would be approving, right, because I noticed that the books are sort of linked in, and obviously, they, so they haven't bought the books they're gonna use, or?
None of these courses require a textbook. Um, and, and we can certainly do this in whatever way suits the, the board. Past practices has always been that, that we bring the course proposals to the board, and you're basically approving from the beginning, it's a study. Uh, and then any textbook would go through the adoption process, separate from the course.
Well, there are books attached to it, um, and by definition of curriculum statute, it is curriculum. Um, I don't have necessarily any problem with any of them, I'm just wondering, and I did read through them, and I did, like, some of them were very good, I didn't have to go hunting for the, uh, standard they were meeting, and they all listed their standard, but some of them were a little bit more specific on where the standard was, I went and read it, um. I just don't know. I don't know, that was just sort of my.
One, one of my concerns, and I think Mr. Garrett can speak to this, being a high school principal, he's trying to put the master schedule together now.
Okay.
Um, and they have to get them put in, it is a huge undertaking at that size of school. If they don't know that these courses are approved, and he did try to start this a while ago, and then there was some revisions from the board, and he had to go back, and then the sexton went and met with the teachers, put a template together, so the board would have the exact same, because it came in different formats. Uh, we, and I guess, priorly, let that creativity, that the board wanted that template, so it would look the same. So they've been working on this for several months, and he's right in the middle, we could certainly change the timeline for next year to the board's liking, to do the curriculum work earlier. But, um, I fear that if we don't get these into the master schedule, and we don't get approval by the board, he won't be able to create a master schedule, or he, if he puts them in hoping they get approved and they don't, then there'll be some disappointed patrons and, and parents and, and students, or if he doesn't put them in and then later adds them, it, it just is a real, it's just, it, and we can certainly, I understand it's not ideal, um, but we just found out two days ago that we need to, like, we thought this was gonna be okay, we didn't understand, it took two days ago, right, at our workshop, that text, other things besides textbook had to be adopted, so now this is new information, this two days ago, and this was already ready to go. So I guess I'm asking the board to consider for the sake of the students, and then having a student-centered master schedule that you move forward to adopt these, and then any textbook or curriculum materials they're asking for can certainly go in the workshop. Um, and they can change it, if it's something the board doesn't approve, they can change what their, uh, materials that are, that they're utilizing.
I guess in looking at it, but part of my concern is that how will the student know the expectation with a typical textbook, and there are books associated with this, and um, but how is the student gonna be able to follow, and that's not given to us here, you know, what the expectation is, you know, how are they gonna know that, um, you know, they met the expectation or didn't meet the expectation, or how would they defend, yes, I did do it, no, I didn't do it, when there's, and it's just a outline like a syllabus slash scope and sequence kind of thing. That's my, I guess that's my, my, and I know they're an elective, so it makes it a little bit harder, but, um, that's my.
Do we have Mr. Garrett?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Well, you know, like you said, these are electives that, uh, flow out to the students, and the students, like, right now, we have eighty-seven students sign up to enroll in master courses right now, because it's a huge interest. Any elective courses, it's been to enrich our curriculum, and so there are standards that are established, so that's years of study that they're going to do in projects. It's not tied to a textbook, so it's gonna be tied to a document that they're gonna have, meaning to show their students. Um, I guess I'm trying to, I, I think the question, maybe you can help me out with this, the nature of the question is, you know, are students gonna take this course, and then perhaps fail because it's not fairly
The expectation, correct, right, and how are they gonna know that they're meeting the expectation or not? Because that's, I mean, I, I appreciate the work that was submitted and made, like, a lot easier, it was awesome, and I know that they had to go through a lot to do that, and I do appreciate that, but I just, those were just some of my questions, and then knowing that the, um, curriculum workshop is holding up, I just wondered if they should all be moved there, but with consideration of your scheduling and being, you know, everybody started getting on the same page two days ago, so.
Yeah, yeah, just from our standpoint, and there's a lot of moving pieces, I understand, they submitted these initially a couple of months ago, or a few months ago. And it went through the process. But I know, like, for example, for the art appreciation, uh, these, there are fifty-seven kids signed up for that art appreciation, there's probably some actually in, uh, those, eighty-seven. So if they don't get approved, which, you know, that's the problem with the board, uh, we have to put them into some other electives that would be their second or third choice.
Right, right.
Students that have schedules, and for electives like humanities, we, what we wanna do is a rich experience, you know, in that particular art that they've chosen, um. I don't know if I can, you know, give you textbooks, I can't do that, I guess I can just assure you that our, our, our instructors just looked at this well, but
Right.
Particularly the expectation from the beginning of the year and the beginning of each year about what's expected, this can be begined, and then generally, electives, we don't see students fail or like to explain, you know, because it's something they wanna do, they signed up for specifically, and the fact that no, it's like, they're just awesome. If people could do this. And then if, if we've proven it now, or I just say, well, I hope you're gonna approve it, and then later on, you say no, then we, then we're looking at, okay, now staffing, what happens now? We've got all kinds of moving parts that we're gonna get. And I, I, I mean, that's, those are good questions, and that's, you know, those are things you better wrestle with, but these are very, um, student-centered electives that fit requirements, you know, in a graduation, uh, for students who graduate.
Right.
You know, they have to meet some of the elective credits.
Sure, yeah.
There's forty-seven elective credits that they have to, to have. So in light of that, they have a lot of different choices in order to do that, but what we're trying to do is just provide courses that our students really deem as valuable, for example, the personal finance course.
Yeah, which I thought was great.
Over fifty students signed up for that, taught by, uh, Shannon Till, who's a trick, you know, teacher, that was a teacher, just a fantastic teacher, and she's tied to C P P curriculum, which would be very, very fine for that. Movies as literature, again, one of the standards that they're meeting, so just, these are the standards that we're gonna, uh, identify, and, uh, you know, we'll create our, our, the assignments, the, uh, projects that would meet those standards, so it's, you know, it's specifically, you know, the competency of that.
So in all of the course proposals at the bottom, they have the kind of rating as far as how great they're coming, what percent, yes. A class work. Uh, and one of the things that our teaching job with kids is that we're gonna use rubric, the kids have the rubrics, so they know what, what they're, what they're, we're moving, if there are example, our examples, uh, those are provided to kids, so, um, and I, this is kind of, um, a process that every single person that we have in our district has gone through, um, with regard to the things that are identified in there, and it's certainly, if there is, if there's more information that we can provide for you, that will be more helpful, and I can add that to the template, um, moving forward. I've been working directly with these teachers, because they did submit them a long time ago, two or three months ago, and then, uh, we worked on changing the templates, so you could find the things that I thought you would need to see. I actually took a day and went, um, Mr. Barrett got a security guest teacher, and, okay, they just rolled out days, so that I could work with one teacher at a time to go through their course proposal, and, uh, because some of them didn't have standards, and sure, they have the standards, have to get them right, so there's been a lot of work that has gone into this, and I know that they have a clear picture in their mind.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
The kids are gonna be.
Right, right.
Um, I, I'm not sure probably how to put that in, so that it's tangible for you, so you have.
Uh, Lisa? Um, just in reviewing, uh, some of the courses that were presented, one of my questions is like on the competitive speech, it states that there's no textbook for the course, but yet, in the plan, there's reference to students, um, utilizing the book Talk Like TED. Um, it needs to be reviewed by the students, so are we providing that book for the students, are we requiring them to get it on their own? I mean, if it's an expectation for the course, but yet there's no text, I, I don't understand how that works, um, at the high school level, I guess.
If the teachers are gonna ask the kids to work out of a book, then we would provide that book, and that would have to come as part of the curriculum process that we're gonna go through, it sounds like that date got changed, like we announced in June. Um, and that, as Mr. Garrett said, if there was a concern with the book, we would have to, we would have to come back to you with something that, uh, was more valuable for you, so at this point, you're not, you're definitely not approving the books, all, all we're asking is that we can approve the courses, so that Chad Carson can create the course number, so that Mr. Garrett can put in the master schedule, and kids can actually be assigned to the classes. Does that help?
So you're asking us to approve these courses based on the information provided, and at some point, text would come back to us for curriculum approval, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and moving forward, Chair Thompson, moving forward, it would all be part of the same process, um. Since we just found out this last week, that this part should be part of that curriculum process, I would do this differently moving forward.
Okay.
At this point, we're just trying to kind of help Mr. Garrett and his counselors get the master schedule in place that kids can start signing up for classes.
If I could just add one thing, you know, the teachers that propose this, I mean, they're really doing, I mean, this is something you have to do. Uh, I mean, what I did is I put an email to our teachers, do you any idea, is there anybody who would ever like to teach something, you would think that would be of interest to our students? And they took the initiative to go ahead and go through this process, and, and, and it's worked very, very hard, doing that with this text and, you know, with the direction that you provided, and the word that's provided. Um, and, and, uh, and I know that, I think we wanna encourage that, that aspect of having teachers, uh, propose courses for the sake of our students. Uh, and, uh, because it is, it's, it's a lot of additional work for them, they can sit back and say, I'm just gonna teach the core, and that's it, you know, that's just the way it's gonna be. And I just applaud our staff for saying, you know, hey, we can personal finance, this is, yeah, really good for our students, they need this. You know, it'd be great to have them understand, uh, you know, some aspects of, of this, that's what they need, something that they can be practical skills for. Um, so, I, I mean, a lot of things to consider, uh, but I, you know, I, I I'm hopeful, you know, that, that these proposals can be at least approved, and I understand that the curriculum piece, uh, you know, if there's changes that have to be made, that they, you know, we would, we would understand.
That, that looks.
So maybe if you feel like, oh, maybe if we feel like these courses are courses that we would, um, agree upon, we could approve them with the caveat that any additional textbooks or, um, additions to this, to these courses need to be approved by the board.
Any resources?
Resources?
Yeah, it's good, that was, given to me, my comment is that, that's what we just learned, that it's not just textbooks for our curriculum, it is anything that is used as a resource, so the movies and the movies and literature course, those would all have to be approved as well. Which is why I made, I specifically made that all of this, and we took it with care about them, but I would definitely bring that as part of it.
Yeah, I personally have no problem with any of these, I think they're all great, in fact, some I remember doing in high school. Um, the two I would like more time to look into is the art appreciation and the movies as literature. Um, my own personal preference, um, just because I had a couple more questions as to the, uh, presentation of the material and how much, um, material was being, uh, presented, with type of material being presented, um. So I, I'm just not sure what to do with this, I guess we, um, could, um, I don't know that we would ever say, I, it's not, I'm not of the opinion where we would say none of these are good courses, I don't think that's it, I think that I, um, would like to reserve the right to modify and remove whatever approved the text to any of these courses. You know, allowing, uh, Mr. Trent and his staff to move forward with their, uh, scheduling, but then if, you know, we have the opportunity to look, become more familiar with what's actually being proposed before we, you know, give the sign up, that's, that's my personal, uh, feeling on it, I, I don't see there's like, you know, no glaring red flag to any of them, it's jewelry smithing and personal finance, you know, but I would still like to be more confident of.
Would it be helpful to either that instructor, you know, to answer questions?
Yeah, or maybe I would have some more questions, but yeah, uh, yeah, definitely, um, like the, like I said, my, my only two is the art appreciation and the movies and literature, um. Yeah, and maybe see, speaking with the, with the instructor, but, uh, I don't, that was.
Well, respecting that, I mean, by statute, we are required to approve all curriculum. I don't see the harm in approving the courses, then having the course content provided for approval, because I believe we could work with Mr. Derek staff or Lisa, Ms. Sexton with respect to the content that's provided to the students.
Yes.
We could approve the courses, however, we still need to approve the course content so that Mr. Derek and his staff could do their scheduling. The reality is, though, simply, a course cannot go forward without content approval, and we're not approving the content, because we haven't seen any of the content in these courses. Would that seem reasonable?
I think so, I think, I think, um, you know, approving the courses based on the courses themselves, and then being able to, um, approve the, the, really, it goes back to like the, I, I wasn't here Tuesday, but it makes sense that the materials that are being used, they still need to be subject to approval.
Right, right, correct.
And ultimately, like, that's going to happen anyway in the, in the curriculum, so the actual materials, nature, the courses are gonna be.
Yeah, the course, I, I think they're great, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the courses themselves are great, especially the financing, I thought was great, and, uh, the community partnership that they created, um, and even some of the course material that they chose for that, a lot of, I mean, I thought they were all pretty good, and just looking at, um, the way some students learn different than other students, I thought it was interesting, the movies as literature, um.
And we do have some students who are interested in, in film, and so this gives them an opportunity to kind of really analyze film, um, from a, from a different
Yeah.
That you're looking at media, text, and different ones.
That's great.
You know, my first class, the, the movies as literature, um, kinda made me laugh to myself, man, I'm, I'm gonna watch movies for a parade, that sounds great. But, you know, when you really, when you really look at the course, you know, and if you think about, if you think about the movies, like, that you watch again, after you've watched the first one, and you see things, and the conversation you're gonna have, there really is something to it, it's not just watching movies and.
I, I thought this brought us to the kind of timeline with the different movies from very various, very much.
Yes, I thought the same thing.
College, we are at this credit for taking a journey of film class in college, so, like, yeah.
What I like is that it's student-driven interest, so they're gonna find.
Yeah.
It's not, you know, just.
Yeah, I think it's great, I think that anything, anytime you can expand the knowledge and scope of what, uh, you know, young adult is getting exposed to, I think that's great, it's super.
One of the things I like about the way, like, when they school does their lectures, um, they really give the kids opportunities to dabble in different things that they might pursue as an adult, uh, in our world.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, I had two children, and I, and I school, and when they brought this home every year, um, I was blown away by all of the offerings, and to move this bridge. I was blown away by all of the offerings, and to move this bridge out also, there are different courses. So I think our high schools are doing a really good job of trying to create opportunities for our kids. Makes them make long decisions as they're going, about what I'm going to do when I blow up.
I think that's great.
Okay, so moving forward, we do need a motion. To approve the art appreciation course. With an understanding that the content curriculum has not been approved.
I'll move to approve the art appreciation course for Lakeland High School. As presented with the reserved right here approving the. Content in curriculum being used. And also any modifications that the board may feel necessary.
I second that motion.
Bring a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on, I need an action item to approve the jewelry and metal smithing course. For Lakeland High School with the understanding that the course content for curriculum has not been approved by the board yet.
So moved.
I second that.
Bring a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. I need a motion to approve the personal finance course for Lakeland High School. With the understanding that the course content for curriculum has not been approved yet by the board.
So moved.
Second that motion.
Right, hearing a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. I need a motion to approve movies as literature course for Lakeland High School. With the understanding that the course content curriculum has not yet been approved by the board.
So.
Okay.
Bring a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Need a motion to approve the competitive speech course for Lakeland High School. With an understanding that the course content curriculum has not been approved by the board. Yet.
So.
I'll second that.
Bring a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Last week, we brought policy fifty-two sixty abused and neglected child reporting to the board. For first read, we are to approve. It's now an action item to approve policy, the update to policy fifty-two sixty abused and neglected child reporting. Can I get a motion to accept this?
Michelle, if, Chair Thompson?
Yes ma'am.
Is appropriate right now to point out a typo I noticed today, I missed it on first read.
Okay, where's the typo?
In the neglected definition.
Okay.
Third from last sentence, safety is missing the Y at the end.
Hold on, I don't see it. Is it part of the B or the C?
The, the B.
Okay.
The B sentence.
Yep, almost to be.
Almost.
Yeah, right, or C. It says safe or well-being.
Oh yeah, we need a Y there. So. Clerk Chrissy, could you please note that that needs to be click, typo corrected?
Yeah, that, we can definitely fix that even if you approve it.
Perfect.
So does that mean I can make an emotion to approve the update to policy fifty-two sixty. Abused and neglected child reporting with the changes we've discussed?
Thank you. No second to that.
Hearing a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, we have, we need a motion to approve. Policy fifty-two eighty professional standards commission code of ethics. This is the second, we had first read last week. Does anyone have any questions or comments on it?
I do not.
Okay. So if I could get a motion to approve the policy, that'd be great.
I'll move to approve policy fifty-two eighty professional standards commission. PSC code of ethics as presented.
So.
I'll second that.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Lastly, policy fifty-three twenty-five was brought last meeting for first read. Does anyone have any? Comments, questions, or concerns regarding the policy?
I just do on the cross-references, the fifty-three thirty and the fifty-three thirty-five. I don't remember if those were up to date or if those were. Ones that we were waiting on clarification, I think one of them is up to date. Do you remember that?
Um, I, I believe it was my understanding that HR Director Cunningham. Was going to ensure that those were in employee files and handed out for signing, however. I do believe because the policies are referenced, they do need to be on our website under policies. So is HR Cunningham still there? HR Director?
Yes.
A long night. Brooke, do we have those, the? The employee use in electronic communications device and the employee electronic mail and online service usage forms?
Hi. I do, grammar forms.
I'm sorry, you do or do not?
I do.
Okay, perfect. So we do need to make sure that we work on those to get them on the website. I don't know if anything needs to be corrected because I don't think we've seen the forms, but, oh, actually. Five-three-three-five, yes, we have, we just, isn't that what we're approving? No. We're at five-three-two-five. We've got five-three-three-five coming up under discussion, along with the form. So that's taken care of, but five-three-three-zero. We need to get to the table so that can get on the website. Okay. Okay.
Great, so I'll move to approve. Policy five-three-two-five employee use of social media, electronic communication, which is. Our former five-three-two-eight as presented.
I second the motion.
Hearing a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to discussion items, first item for discussion is the trustee redistricting with the twenty-twenty census. I'm not sure why that's up for discussion.
Well, I can share a little bit of what we learned at training and.
Perfect.
Maybe that's why, because I know that we've had discussion back and forth that we were going to go with ISBA or that's something that. They, now its office would do. We did get clarification with ISBA that it's actually a two-step process.
Okay.
The first step being a fixed cost of. I want to say nineteen hundred and ninety dollars or just shy of two thousand dollars. And that. Won't happen until the census data comes back from. The powers that be and they let us know whether. Boundaries actually have to be redrawn or not, which are based upon a ten percent variance. So if there's a, a zone that has a ten percent variance, then the line may have to be redrawn, which would be up to the board. To redraw that line following an established line, which would be a railroad, a river. A census block, what have you, and then we would return that if we chose to go with ISBA. We would return that back to them. They would submit it for basically a quote, because. Until you get to step two and know what we have to do, we might not have to do anything. We, we might stay the same, but. All of our assumption is due to the growth in the area that some lines may have to be redrawn, so.
Okay.
If nothing else, we know that nineteen hundred and ninety dollars or somewhere in there would at least get us through the first step with ISBA and then. I imagine, no matter who we went with, it would be the same thing, which is the second step, nobody knows, because we don't know how many lines we're drawing. How many legal descriptions have to be done or.
Okay.
Those things, so that, that's the only reason I can think of it's on, does anybody have? Any addition to that based on what we learned or?
Do we have an understanding of how many patrons we need to have in a zone before it needs to be rezoned?
Ten percent.
Ten percent? I don't follow that, I'm sorry. There has to be ten percent growth?
That's ten percent change, either up or down.
Okay.
She did an example on Tuesday and explained it.
Okay.
So it's not going to affect the November elections, she, you know, she had a new timeline that she shared with us that we weren't aware of. So really, we just need to know whether you want us to move forward with the ISBA to. Put our name in for that, to sign up for that first step with him, or you want us to research something else.
Okay. Well, does, is anybody opposed to going with ISBA?
No, I'm not opposed.
No, I'm not either.
So maybe we should add it to an agenda for.
Approved.
Or what have you, whatever we're going to do.
Does that need to be an agenda item? I'm curious.
I, I don't, I don't believe it is, because the, you guys will be approving it when you get the actual expenditure. As long as nobody's opposed to it, we already have the email and. Several superintendents are just writing back, as long as there wasn't any objections, then I just do that and then. You'll be approving the expenditure when it comes to the quarter.
Are you okay with that, Trustee Grissom?
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with that, if everybody else is fine with that, and it sounded like they're pretty much getting their ducks in a row too, because all of their. Planners need to know also, you know, how much they have to staff up or, you know, they don't know how many districts they're going to be doing too, so.
Right.
You know, out of courtesy, the sooner we can let them know probably the better too.
Okay. Then let's move forward with the offer by ISBA regarding trustee redistricting. Uh, next item for discussion is a first read on update to policy fifty-one-ten criminal history background checks. I did, because I did miss the policy committee meeting. I'd been in an accident, but. I did go through, I added a couple of clerical stuff, nothing significant or major. The read of it was great. Does anyone have any questions or comments on fifty-one-ten?
I do not.
No.
All right, then. The next, first read is of policy fifty-one-twenty equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity and non-discrimination. When you look at this one. The green highlight is something that I had done a couple weeks back when we were doing policy committee. The green highlight is what new language that's been added. From ISBA to the policy that we previously had, it was verbatim, so I just moved ISBA's language over because they also, no. I pulled up ISBAs. And then I added the language that we had from the other one, because ISBA offered a tr- a lot of legal reference information. So I felt that that was more significant to keep on the document. And instead of copying and pasting everything, I just pulled the document and made the changes that were on ours, I moved it over to ISBAs. Or vice versa, but that's a complete form. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that one?
Was this one that we looked at so many, I, last week, and I know there was one that clerk. Williams and I had talked about, there were several references at the bottom, we thought, well, we can put it through, as long as we know that we were waiting to hear back. Was this that one, or is there still another one coming that we were talking about?
The uniform grievance policy is one that we were waiting on and. There were other districts, we're told, that checked in on this policy also, and then attorneys looked at it and. They saw a lot of things that needed to be updated and then to them, so they're working on it, so that will come.
Next is the first read of new policy five-through-three-five employee use to be electronic communication devices and accompanying form five-three-three-five F. Electronic computing device agreement. These are new policies we didn't have before. Does anyone have any questions or comments on either the policy or the form?
No.
Okay. Next is the first, a first read of an update to policy fifty-five hundred personnel files. And it looks like we also have a procedures for releasing personnel records for hiring school districts.
So on the policy five-five-zero-zero personnel files on the proposed view. I was kind of curious about. I don't remember, oh, let's see. Obtaining personnel records for applicants. Number five is rebuttals to performance evaluations. But number fifteen is rebuttal documents, I just wondered. The necessity to have number five in there, if you're already have, if you already are going to have, just seems like. Repetitive.
Okay.
Because you're already saying rebuttal documents as a whole on number fifteen, so to be specific about rebuttals to performance evaluations, that seems. Rhetorical.
What I think it may mean, and HR Director Cunningham could chime in. The rebuttals to performance evaluations, if a staff member wants to rebut. Their evaluation, they put that in writing. Rebuttal documentation, in my opinion, are the supporting documents as to the why. Of, you know, we've done our evaluation and here's the documents that support. Why you either scored really high or really low or whatnot. I do believe they're two different items, but I'm not positive.
They are two different items. So we, they are able to buy a rebuttal to every evaluation. And then also other documents within the file.
So rebuttal documents aren't actually rebuttals, they're just documents to support the rebuttal.
Okay. Dear. I'm sorry.
And so, Ramona, Lisa, and Brooke, no, when I read through these last night, there are two highlighted lines on there. We currently do not have policy forty-two sixty or fifty-one hundred P. So I just highlighted that on the document, because I think we need to get it on, we need to bring it forward to get it approved.
Right, and those were some of the things that we came across that are probably in our notes, like you said, that we covered a lot of them. And once again, the forty-two sixty, I think we actually have, but it's not forty-two sixty.
Okay.
Records available to the public, I think was under our community. And it's pretty much the same.
You know what, forty-two sixty, you are correct. It's forty-one something else, it's forty-one thirty. Because forty-one thirty on ISBA is actually records available.
Right.
To the public on the website or something like that. There is a forty-one thirty, so we do need to get that cleaned up.
Yeah, so, and there again, that's one of those things where they, for whatever reason, they must have renumbered. Yeah, so, and there again, that's one of those things where they, for whatever reason, they must have renumbered, so. Our forty-one thirty is their reference forty-two sixty. Yep, and the fifty-two forty F, I thought we already had. And the fifty.
That's a form, and I don't show, we have it on our website.
Okay.
And the same with fifty-three thirty F, we don't have that on our website. But we kind of covered it in the last. One that we've got to get these on the website as well.
Right, okay.
Okay. So does anyone have any questions, further questions or comments on this policy?
I don't.
Alright. Anything on the purse, on the procedure? And then the next item is a first read of an update to policy fifty-seven hundred substitutes. I, I did add a couple of minor grammatical clarifications. To make it a little easier to read, but. Other than that, I thought the policy was great. Does anybody have any comments or questions on it?
Nope, I do not.
Okay. Then. Okay, so that's it for our discussion items, there is. I guess I could make it. Chrissy, can I have something on discussion item even though it's not here?
Can you, that would be the new agenda, but if you could add it in the below item, that would be maybe a future agenda item.
Well, what it is, is it has to do with the clerk of the board position, we've received about five applications or six. And I do believe we should get together to review them to see if we have. You know, because we have so many that, I mean, not so many, but like four is a lot. That we could pick a time to review them and whatnot. I guess we could move that up and have it under announcements, couldn't we? Would that work? Because it's my understanding we can have announcements without having it posted on the agenda. So I have an announcement. We have several applicants for the clerk of the board and we should. Consider reviewing their documentations to consider. If there is a potential person for the position. Does anybody have the input on that?
I agree, yeah, we better do it, it'd be great to. Sit down and go through those and.
Okay, that being said. Do people have availability that it could work?
I think we have one free day next week on the nineteenth.
Okay, I'm not saying we have to do it next week.
Trustee Bane can't do it then.
I could also suggest that you could also do, we do a lot of pre-screening. And we have pre-screening rubric that we used last time, their Board Chair Thompson was in charge of the process. But we kind of worked together since she hadn't been prime reading before in the district. So we have a pre-screening document that's a Google Doc already that you all can. We can put all the applicants on, you can read it, and then you could pre-screen, you do your rating scale in there. That gives Board Chair Thompson some indication of ones that are vetoed. That you don't want, or ones that you say these definitely shouldn't be included in our interviews. So you actually, we can get all together. If time is of the concern, and then you certainly can talk about it. You obviously can come together and do that if you want, but if you are looking for a way, we've had that quite a bit in the district.
So, Becky, if I'm hearing you, I'm sorry, Dr. Meyer, if I'm hearing you correctly, you can send this rubric to all of us and we could independently. Score the applicants and then those could be presented or I guess sent to me and we could determine. I, I could determine based on everyone's input, how many candidates we have for interviewing?
Yep, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Okay, how does that sound for everyone so we don't have to get together again? Will that work for you, Rob? Deb, will that work for you?
Yes, thank you for doing that.
I did do anything. But you're welcome. Alright, so. Chrissy, if you can get that sent to us, that'd be great, and then we'll go forward. So now I need an action item to approve to enter into executive session per Idaho Code seventy-four-two-oh-six-one-B. No decisions or actions will be made during executive session, this is only a motion to enter into executive session.
I'll move that we enter into executive session for Idaho Code seventy-four-two-oh-six-one-B.
I'll second that.
Hearing a motion and a second, I need a roll call vote.
Trustee Bane, yes, trustee Major?
Yes. No. Going to get something to drink. You have, okay. Okay, so now we've come out of executive session. Need a motion to ratify the administration's decision for involuntary leave. With pay for employee oh-five-one-three-two-zero-two-one-E per Idaho Code thirty-three-five-one-three-seven.
I'll move to approve the ratification of the administration's decision for involuntary leave with pay for employee zero-five-one-three-two-zero-two-one. Dash E for Idaho Code thirty-three-five-thirteen-seven.
Hearing a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries, and that concludes tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.